I've already been through meetings before this too. So, I'm just hanging out. It's been a while. What are you doing in the present? A scholarship? If you got married or not?
Hold on. All right, you guys are on tape.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the planning board this evening. We just have a few quick orders of business before we get into our public hearings this evening. Just to notify you at this point, if you're either here for the Valero Road subdivision, the White Elephant Hotel LLC, or the Brotherhood of Thieves, those are all continued to October 15. Board members, you have an agenda before you at this point. An appreciated motion to approve said agenda?
He said he'd come tonight. Wait a minute, didn't the White Elephant going up forward tonight?
So, motion to approve the agenda, ladies and gentlemen. Oh, do you have?
Did you want to change something?
Leslie, do you have something to change from?
Mr. Chairman, the Don Demick preliminary plan?
Yep.
That was included on the agenda in error, so that needs to be completely removed.
Which one?
It's Don Demick preliminary.
It's off this new agenda now.
Do we have to?
Under Section 8.
Do we have to grant extensions for those continuings, or is it okay to just leave it?
As far as I know, it's okay to leave it, otherwise staff would have notified us.
Okay.
Okay, so with those changes, accept a motion to approve the agenda?
Yes.
Do I hear a second discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have you unanimously. You have minutes from February 19th, 2015. Any errors or omissions or changes that need to take place?
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, do I hear a second? Motion's nominated, seconded, discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Let the record reflect, Mr. McGlaughlin will abstain on those minutes, so that'll be a 3-2-0 vote with McGlaughlin abstaining. Okay, that is going to bring us into our public hearings this evening. First thing before us is 21-15, which is 46 Surfside Road LLC. Let's see, Mr. Santos and Mr. Cohen for the applicant. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Thank you for the record, Paul Santos with Nantucket Surveyors, on behalf of the owner and applicant of the property, Chip Webster, who's seated behind me, and counsel, Steve Cohen, who's also behind me. This is an MCD application, of which the board has seen before. A public hearing had been opened. We made a presentation and discussion was had with regard to items that were needed to be addressed. We have addressed those items and are here tonight to discuss those, but I'd just briefly, because we did skip last month's meeting, I'd just like to briefly walk you through the application again, and then we can talk specifically about the traffic report and the loading zone, which seemed to be the two items that we needed to address further. The application is an MCD for essentially two pieces of property, 46A and 46 Surfside Road. Is an existing developed property in which there sat here a single-family home, and currently exists a duplex in this northern section of the property here, 46, 46A. By way of reference, the Muse Restaurant is to the north, and we're located on Surfside Road, almost across from Windy Way. So, the application is a parcel of land that is, was rezoned in 2012 from RC2 to CN, so the current zoning is CN. The combined area of the parcel is 16,844 square feet, and we are located in the public wellhead recharge district. The site itself is serviced by both public water and sewer. There are no wetlands or flood hazard zones on the property, and as I had described, the abutting properties are the Muse, Manny Diaz's property here, Land Bank property to the west. The application is for a 30-seat restaurant to occupy the front portion of the existing structure. The residential unit will stay here in the backside of the structure. That unit will be dedicated for use for restaurant staff. The, what was an existing single-family home, which is now a foundation, the dwelling has been moved off-site, that will be a mixed-use office space on the first floor with a residential component on the second floor. Parking is via an accessway off of Surfside Road for the commercial residential complex, and then this existing entrance here, which would be expanded, a parking lot expanded for the restaurant and residential component of it along the backside of the restaurant. The site itself allows 40% ground cover. The commercial, we're only looking at 19%. In this area here, which is the restaurant, is 15%, both under the allowable 40%. The proposed open space is 35%. Because it's an MCD, the threshold of 30% is exceeded, so no waivers with regard to ground cover, no waivers requested with regard to open space. There is an internal connection, a pathway between the lower parking lot and the upper parking lot, as you do have some type of use that will occur. The office, commercial use would be off-peak hours of the restaurant and so forth, so there is a blending of the parking via a pathway from the lower parking lot to the upper parking lot. The restaurant itself, a 30-seat restaurant at one space per three seats would require 10 spaces. Eight employees at one per three employees on a peak shift would be three spaces, and the apartment complex would be a two-bedroom at one space per bedroom for two spaces, for a total of 15 spaces required for the restaurant component. The 46A Surfside, which is the commercial, our office space, and I'm saying commercial, but it's actually office space, I should correct myself, it's going to be a, you know, architect, engineer type of professional office, which would be one per 200, which would be three spaces. The apartment component would be a two-bedroom at one space per bedroom, so five spaces would be required for the office/residential use, and there are five spaces provided in this parking configuration here. We are less than the required parking for the restaurant and commercial, or the residential component of it. We are deficient by approximately three spaces. So, the application set before you asks for a waiver of three spaces. The proposal that we came forth on the original application was, because of the configuration of the parking lot here and the parking lot here, we came up with the concept of a loading zone, or a dedicated loading zone, within the Surfside Road layout that would then service this facility here via access to the site along this way here. My original proposal was this dash line that you see here, along here and here. After review by MDM Consulting, which is our traffic consultant, and looking at the size of trucks that would service a facility like this, specifically the biggest truck we're looking at would be the Cisco tractor-trailer, which is not the longest tractor-trailer, but it's the WB40, which I believe is about a 45 to 38-foot truck. That layout is designed to accommodate that Cisco truck in here, which would be a free-flow into the site. The truck would park here and then have a free-flow out of this area here. We would then provide, once we know what the layout, actual layout of the restaurant is, and where we would load and unload, they would be provided a walkway too in this area here to get from the loading zone into the restaurant itself for the purposes of loading. It may be a chute down on a lower section into a basement section, or it may be along the front and then in through the restaurant this way. So, this configuration here is a larger configuration than we originally proposed, but it does accommodate the WB40 truck. It also allows the truck to be parked here with no obstruction to the sightlines either south or north from the northerly entrance, and the same from the southerly entrance. So, you have free access, free sightlines with a vehicle parked in this particular spot here. I did, under this configuration, to break up the pavement, show a three-foot wide green space along this area. Whether the board feels that's appropriate, or whether that can go away, we don't count that as open space. It's simply a three-foot island to kind of break up the pavement. This would be a paved surface from the edge of the pavement on Surfside Road. So, any discussion that we may have regarding that, it doesn't, whether it's there or not there, has no effect on the truck movement in or out of the site itself. The, both parking lots are not proposed to be paved, they're a mixed gravel or shell type of surfaces. The refuse location along the backside of the property here, as I had mentioned, we do have screening proposed along each of the perimeters of the property here. There's an existing wood rail fence with roses along the front area that would be picked up and moved to the backside or on the street line within that particular area here, other than the area for the accessway along the side. We did commission MDM consultants to do a full traffic memorandum, a report with regard to the particular uses on the site, the existing uses, and I won't bore you with all the details here, but I'll go through kind of the conclusion of the MDM report, which you were supplied with. Says, "In summary, the proposed mixed-use development will result in a nominal trip increase of less than 10 new vehicle trips per hour during peak hours, representing an inconsequential change in volume on Surfside Road relative to the existing conditions. Driveway sightlines will also meet or exceed applicable design criteria for regulatory travel speeds along Surfside Road, published by the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, based on recommended layout for a loading zone along the site frontage." That's looking at this from a 35 to 40 mile an hour speed on Surfside Road. The sightlines in both cases exceed the standard. Auto turn vehicle turn analysis confirmed that the proposed site layout can accommodate a WB40-type delivery vehicle without impact on-site parking, circulation, or sightlines from either of the site driveways. We have agreed as part of the approval to submit a complete engineering package to the towns consultant, Ed Pesci, for review. It is in the public wellhead recharge, so I do also need a water quality certification from the Water and Comet Water Company with regard to on-site drainage and that component of the project. With regard to any type of relief or the zoning in particular, we're subject to Section 139.7, which is the use charge with regard to the restaurant use and the alcohol sales, Section 139 11I, which allows us to reduce the setbacks as part of any type of MCD requirement. As I had mentioned earlier, the original RC2 setbacks were less restrictive than the current CN, and we're asking to have this building here, or the backside of the addition to the office building, be at five feet, which is similar in line to what it was previously under the RC2. Inclusionary housing unit, 139 11J, we've included the residential component here with a commitment to the restaurant use. Off-street parking, we did speak about the three spaces. Now, currently, under this proposal, we are proposing in off-peak hours to place or to park cars within the loading zone. Whether or not the board sees that's, sees fit or not, under this configuration, there are some conflicts with putting two cars back-to-back, because if this car is in here, this car cannot freely move out. If this green space is away, we might be able to do something different with that. But, under this configuration, two cars here would create this car having to go out first before the back car went out. Screening, with regard to the 10-foot requirement, as in some cases, there is less than 10 feet already existing on the property. Again, for any site over 20 spaces requires the 10-foot screening. And then the major site plan review, including the waiver of the traffic study, obviously we've provided the traffic study with regard to the application. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have. I did receive an email today from Mike Burns, who couldn't be here tonight, but he expressed, two issues that Mike had brought up. Number one was defining the path for the deliveries from the site into the building, which I did speak about, and then also that issue about if you're allocating two spaces here in off-loading-zone hours, what happens when a car's parked here and then there's another car in front of it? You don't want to see backing out onto Surfside Road. The proposal that you see before you for the Surfside Road would require a license from the county commissioners with regard to this configuration. Having just got the traffic report and the size changing, we wanted to come before you, get input here with regard to the loading zone before we actually made application to the county commissioners, but we are prepared to do that with regard to this current proposal, now knowing that it does work with regard to sightlines, traffic, and the loading component of the application. And be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Go ahead.
How do you turn it on?
Just press that button right there.
Okay. Okay, got it. I've thought about this proposal for a couple of months, and I had a couple of big changes that I wanted to put out there, just for everybody to think about. What I think we should do is eliminate the building, have a U-shaped horseshoe traffic pattern, put 10 parking spaces on each side of the restaurant, and that'll bring you up to 20 spaces. I know you're going to lose revenue from the building being gone, but if you have an intake one way in here, go around, come around, and go out, one way in, one way out, then you're going to have 10 parking places, nose-in on each side of the building. There's approximately 10 here, put 10 more here. Get rid of the loading zone. I don't like parking on Surfside Road, it's a 35 mile an hour road, it doesn't make me comfortable. I think you might, I don't know if this would work, but you might be able to talk to the Muse about a shared loading zone, and the guys can roll their trucks over from the Muse parking lot. I'm not comfortable with the loading zone, and I'm not comfortable with two parking places out there. So, if you do this, if you eliminate this retail, this professional building, and you make the loading zone green space toward the road, you can increase the size of your restaurant, I think, with 20 parking places, and you can make it bigger, perhaps 35 seats or 40 seats. I'm not sure about that, we'd have to think about that. But, this is just what I'm suggesting. I've never been comfortable with this proposal as proposed, but if you made a U-shaped traffic flow in and out, one way, and put 20 parking places, you'd have a nice restaurant and apartment there. I just would hope you would consider that, and I don't think there's anything else I wanted to say about it, but just remember, go in, around, go out, put 10 parking places on each side, north and south, get rid of the loading zone and the two on the road, I think, and also, what you need to do is a dedicated crosswalk with signage over to Windy Way and the bike path, so your neighborhood patrons can come over safely. There's a, there's a crosswalk down by the Muse, but you'll need, you'll need another one here for pedestrians to come over from the neighborhoods in the area to patronize the restaurant. So, that's what I'm thinking. I know it's radical, and I know it's really different, but I think it would work a lot better. Thanks.
Thanks. Mr. Cohen, go ahead.
Sure. Stephen Cohen, just to be responsive, I appreciate Mr. Plachter's concern. The problem is, that we're dealing with is essentially that there's an existing building and an existing foundation here and some lot lines, but really, the problem is, is that the applicant wants the building that's being proposed to eliminate it as his own potential office and dwelling, so eliminating it for the sake of the restaurant is not really where I think he would like to see the project go. And then the second thing is that the loading zone, to the extent that you're pulling out into Surfside Road at 35 miles an hour of traffic going by, I think that pulling out with the traffic is obviously safer than all the people who are nosing out to begin with. So, I don't know that that's a more, that's a, that's a negative there. Having a truck pull in and, pulling out and having to make a turn at the same time is not necessarily a safer or better scenario. So, I appreciate the concerns, and I think if we were starting with a blank slate, we might do this differently, but I'm not sure that either of those necessarily works. The idea of adding a crosswalk is something we'd have to talk to the town about, but it's not objectionable.
Linda?
I got to say, I agree with everything Carl said. I've never been comfortable with this. I don't believe what the traffic report says, because if you have a semi, a split axle parked up there in that loading zone in the street layout, and you're trying to come out of that parking lot and see the people going a lot faster than 35 miles an hour coming from Surfside, you're going to get killed. The only way they're not moving is because they're stuck at the Bartlett, Bartlett Road intersection. I think this is nuts. I've always been concerned about the 20 pounds of potatoes and a 10-pound sack on this property. I know the property well, I used to work at the Muse, when they were all one piece of property, owned by the same people. I think Carl's suggestion, I was going to say it myself, to go in one side and out the other side, because that building is not back there yet, and your client does have another office that he owns.
He doesn't, but that's okay. He doesn't.
I like his other office.
It's a very nice space.
Yes, very nice space. But, I don't know if there's another way to configure this building, or add on to this building, which I wouldn't be adverse to, because the Muse is a fair size, if you really look at it from the air, and run it in and out. I'm having a heck of a lot of trouble with that loading zone, I'm not in favor of it up there. We're all familiar with the Cisco trucks. I don't know what to tell you, and I'm a little concerned about, and in, you know, two parking spaces flanking this building from another board's perspective. So, I'm having trouble with the whole thing. It may not be the best place to put a restaurant, and an office building, and an apartment, and all the parking, and the loading zone. This lot is pretty limited, it's a simple little, was a simple little bungalow for the most part, and that building in the back was moved out, and that improved the situation immensely. So, I don't know where to go with this, guys. I'm not pleased with this at all, and surrounding the building with gravel, as opposed to something a little bit more impervious, but the drainage plan would be a big issue for me, because it backs right up to the wetlands back there that the Land Bank owns. So, I'm not comfortable with this at all, and I am certainly not comfortable with the loading zone up front like that, at all. So, I think...
Do you mean from a planning point of view?
From a planning point of view, as well as you're going to run into a buzzsaw elsewhere. I know Nat mentioned to me, well, I don't think that's going to work either. I don't know what to do with this, frankly. I'm uncomfortable with it, but if you can work out an arrangement with the Muse, because they get the truck at the same time, they're not going in and out of the town twice. They're delivering to the Muse and delivering to them, and we've all seen the Cisco truck backed up to the restaurant. It goes up and then it backs in, blocks the entire front parking lot.
It's not open.
When it's, when they're not really buzzing, they're like, they get there pretty, they get there before noon, I don't know how that happens, but they get there before noon, or when the dead of the afternoon, and they could deliver to both places, and that would eliminate that loading zone, but you'd have to, we'd have to take a look at the Muse, they're under like four or five different special permits over there.
Well, the, the issue that we have with the Muse is that the owner has offered to be very generous and cooperative, but his lender does not allow him to add additional easements or grant, you know, legal rights like that, which I understand. So, you know, if Cisco pulls in there and they want to service the entire neighborhood from the Muse parking lot, they don't really need anybody's permission to do that, they could just park the truck and do it, nobody, they're not even open, or maybe they're serving pizza, but they don't have any, you know, they don't have a full parking lot at 10:00 in the morning.
Because they're not coming out and driving over there.
Right. If, if there was no loading zone available, that's likely what would happen, because, you know, I mean, if you look downtown, they, they service the entire downtown from one or two or three spots.
Right.
So, I'm not, my client is trying to provide a loading zone. If you'd rather have none and force them to go somewhere else, you know, that's an option before you.
Well, that's where I'm headed, but I'm, I also like Carl's idea of going in and out, and finding another solution for that office building that allows you to do that. I don't know if that would remaster that building, I've, we've already approved it at the HDC, but I don't know if there's another way to do this, but I'm not happy with this as it sits here right now, I got to tell you. It's a lot of use on that lot that was all residential for all of its life. Even when Jim built the back building, that was residential. Now, we're going another direction. That's it.
Anyone else on the board? Mr. McGlaughlin, go ahead.
Looking at this description here on this one here, it's so small, hard to see. You have the semi parked right in the center. What is between the semi and the first building, the big building, on that green? Why can't the semi get off the road further?
You mean the stripper graph?
Move it, move it down, right next to the building. You're going to unload into that restaurant, right? Nice. I can't hear a word you're saying, the microphone's over there.
Yeah, you're, you're talking about moving the loading zone east.
You're going to have one, get it way off the road, you want, that with the sight, according to the drawing here, this sightline.
Yeah.
The truck, Ms. Williams is right.
Yeah.
I agree with everything that was said by Ms. Williams and Mr. Boyer.
Physically, we could do that. I don't, we, we could do that, but what do you think, I'm not sure what the benefit is, and also, it would require removal of some substantial trees that we'd like to try to keep, but what would be the benefit of making that deeper?
The benefit is what Ms. Williams said. There's going to be one massive accident, and eventually, it's going to pound to happen. That's, I find this, this lot, I've watched it come along from that one house there, all of a sudden, stuff shifts around, and this is just some greed, trying to grab up every inch of space, when you can, you can change your thing around and do something different.
I, I think I'm following you, John. Are you suggesting that if the loading zone was more east, that there would be better sightlines at the pullout?
Yeah, it would improve the sightline quite a bit, but it's not just the sightline, it's also being, being out there so close to the road. If a car coming along at 45 and a dog runs out and he serves quick, he's going to hit a truck, and someone's going to get killed. It's a bad scene on the road, that's the way I feel.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Lowell?
Yes. Hi, Steve.
Nat.
Good. Yeah, it is an odd application, no question about that. So was the, so was the fish market on Old South Road, though, you know? I mean, sort of didn't really expect it. There we are, having to deal with it. But this is, I, I see what they're trying to do, they're trying to utilize a foundation, it's a poured foundation, it's brand-new, trying to kind of recycle, or whatever, the foundation that's already there. I, I see that. Trying to utilize the property, it's a, it's an odd area, it's not really a residential, it's mixed now, it's a different place, that area of the island.
It's a little park area.
There's a lot of people living in the area, walking distance to the restaurant. I don't have an issue with waiving some parking to get a better plan that's more in line with, I'm not going to say eliminate the office technically, but to get a loop to go through there, to be able to drive through. I mean, thinking, I think driving through is the biggest problem, regardless of whatever the use is. The loading zone thing, I still believe that the Muse, I mean, I don't know what the layout of Surfside Road is. Paul, what is it? Is it one of those 100-foot jobs, or is it some?
It's not 100, but it's...
Yeah, see, there you go. This is one of the things, is when the original Crispy goes and delivers next door, it's a straight job, and they just back up and pull the thing out and go in that hole they got there. But, when Cisco comes in, they, they do it different ways, depends on who's parked there. Sometimes they just pull in and stop, and just do it. It's not hard. That is the easiest delivery, those Cisco guys are loving going to the Muse. It's not a problem. And we, as, from a planning perspective, similar to Mid Island, I mean, this is Mid Island, it's just a different part of it, we don't consider this like we do with the stop and shop area, but it's the same issue. Instead of making everyone have their own little space, why not share it? Why make the front of that look kind of crazy just because they have to have a loading zone? When there's this massive piece of pavement next door that doesn't get used in the day, that's stupid, in my opinion.
Yeah.
But, the use of the Muse could change. I understand what you mean when you said the lenders too, but that's just, you know, legal talk, Steve, you know?
Well, so, Nat, and just to sort of piggyback your point, if you actually go to look at the Muse, it's paved from the road to the front door.
I know.
So, they essentially have this already without asking anybody for it.
Right.
I think they got a parking, a couple of picnic tables out there, too.
They, yeah.
And I'm not complaining, I'm just saying, this, this situation of having this pavement within the county, within the layout there, is right next door.
Well, that's sort of like when, when Paul's talking about getting a gift thing and getting a license and all that, this is what we're dealing with with the layout. I, I would rather see, I mean, even angle parking isn't a bad idea on the front, but, and just forget the loading zone, and forget that green strip to make it look fluffy when it really doesn't need it.
Back into Surfside Road?
But, well, no, you'd have enough... But, well, no, you'd have enough space to, to, I'm just, I'm not saying that that's a, and I, I'm just saying it's better than this, is what I'm saying. But, I, I, I mean, I'm gonna have to agree with my colleagues. I, I'm not, I don't think we should blow the thing up and deny the project. I think, you know, we need to look at this to try to come up with something that works here that everyone can agree on, because it is an odd scenario, there's no question about that. I mean, normally, this stuff gets leveled and we start with fresh dirt. You're trying to fix it. That's where the problem comes in, you're trying to fix an existing site to make it work when it's never meant to be what you're trying to do.
That, that's right.
You know, that's, I mean, I'm just being honest.
Yeah, no way.
It's not flat dirt.
If we started from a blank slate, you wouldn't put the building in the middle, I think.
I just don't know, is there, I mean, that's an old building, the bungalow house. Finding a way to keep that existing foundation, waive some parking and drive through it, to me, makes a little bit better sense. I'm not gonna go as far as say eliminate the building, because now it's financially unfeasible. But, trying to provide all the parking spaces sometimes is, makes the project unworkable, because you're doing too much, you know, so. And there's a lot of parking in this, in this neighborhood, there's gonna be a lot of people walking to this restaurant.
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, that's the reality of it.
Yeah, I mean, you've got Yummy basically across the street, they have no parking where the old check was and there's a lot of foot traffic there.
Yeah, I mean, you, you, you don't really know exactly how this is gonna, I mean, I'm assuming that you're, you're gonna, you're catering to the, this neighborhood area with this idea.
That's right.
And I think that you're gonna have people parking at the Muse and walking over and no one's gonna care, just like the Stop and Shop. People park at Stop and Shop to go out to dinner in the Mid Island. That's just how it works.
I, I, I do that.
Of course you do.
Let me ask my question, my client a quick question. Okay, so, I, I think we hear the board's comments, we wanna go back and try to retool a little bit and I don't know if there were any other members that wanted to speak. Mr. Chairman, I know you haven't spoken.
I think that's what I'd like to find out, first of all, because you, I'm gonna have you hold for a minute, because I want a little crack at this. You've got other individuals, but I'll get back to you. Di, did you have something?
Well, because of my former type of work, I've been at the Muse at time between 10 o'clock and 1:00, delivering their mail. When the Cisco truck comes in, it doesn't take up a lot of space so cars can't come in and out and get whatever they want to. They load quickly because the loading for the food is right there on the stairs going up, there's a trap door. And without very much difficulty, they could stop before they make that swish and deliver here and then just go forward 20 feet, 30 feet and deliver to the Muse all in one place. Truck I have never seen in danger and I've been there when it's busy or not. The, it's not crashingly busy at 12:00. People come at all times in the afternoon to buy stuff. So, I think it would be a working proposal.
Okay, thanks. Anyone else? Andrew Leslie, did you have anything?
No.
All right. Mr. Cohen, I have to kind of agree with my colleagues at this point. It's, I, I understand you have a foundation in there, but you're proposing brand-new businesses as well, too, and that doesn't mean that the site can't be totally revised as well. You're trying to cram an awful lot into a small area. When you say just abandon the idea of using a loading zone and force them to go into somewhere else, I mean, from a legal perspective, that bothers me.
Yeah, well, I-
As, as a responsibility from a planning board.
Yeah, that's not what we, what we were proposing.
Yeah, well, that's, I, I hear it, but that really is kind of, as a policy decision that would really bother me to say, oh yeah, we're just gonna waive a loading zone and let them figure it out. I think that's irresponsible from a board perspective. You know, you have to remember, too, something like Yummy is pre-existing. Their, you know, their ability to, to not worry about parking, that was, that was before you or I, I think, even got here, it's been there for quite some time. So, I think you need to take an earnest look at the site one more time. I know there are certain things in there, but if you want those certain things, I think you're gonna have to make a determination of how they're gonna work. But right now, it's, it, in my mind's eye, you've got way too much that you're trying to make happen in that site and I, for one, am not really comfortable with that.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman. I think this, this proposal was responsive to the board's comments at the, at the last meeting, but if it's not, you know, if you're not satisfied with the direction it went, we could try it a different way. I, I think you've been clear on that, so we will, we take a motion to continue.
Yeah, and I don't, and I do appreciate the fact that you're willing to give it a try and let us see some potential alternatives here, but it, it doesn't seem, in my mind's eye, to, to be surfacing as this is a better solution than what we had.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I thought, I thought with this was that this, even though it's on the public layout, that, that my client would essentially be spending private money to create a serviceable area that everyone in the neighborhood could use, because it wouldn't be on, on private land. But if the board doesn't want to go in this direction, we can look at, at the property and, and see how we can, you know, I've heard three or four members say they'd rather see to try to connect the parking lots, which I think is gonna be difficult, but we can look at it.
Yeah, just a quick question of staff, Andrew Leslie. Did some other configuration, either as a bus stop or something, kinda happen like this on Old South Road and it just-
Yeah, there's, there's a-
There's a pull-in.
There's a pull-in, but it's got a, a fence and a landscaped area which makes it unusable.
Yeah.
So, that's probably not a good thing.
Yeah, so I think we're hearing our experience maybe from just that one other incident. Not necessarily a good work proposal, but we, I think we appreciate seeing it. Carl, I'm just gonna let you go very quickly, I think Mr. Cohen has said he wants to continue this and I think in the interest of other public hearings, we'll, we'll kind of move so. Very quickly, sir.
Just throwing this out, Mr. Cohen, Mr. Santos and Mr. Webster. Perhaps with 20 spaces, 10 on each side, you might be able to put another apartment on the end of the restaurant that was on the building that might be gone.
You mean, you mean build off the building in the middle? Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of ways to do it. Actually, if I could float one idea and I have no idea if my client wants to do it or not, but if you were to eliminate essentially the back part of the middle building or some portion of it, which is the employee housing, and to connect them, you know, that might be something we could work with. And my hesitation in suggesting that is, you know, with the inclusionary housing requirement, I just wanna make sure that, that you're gonna, yeah, that, that you wouldn't be offended if we cut that. Okay. Linda Stare suggests to me, no. And I don't know what we're gonna do, but I didn't wanna come in with something where we cut something where you yell at us, why'd you cut that piece?
I think it might be worth having a chat with staff, too, about the inclusionary housing issue, because that, that seems to be something that might be coming up at a future town meeting, if you get in drift.
All right. We, we, we have several options that I think are worth looking at to try and be responsive.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, so-
I'll make a motion to continue.
Till 10:15?
Uh, yeah, 10:15, wow.
Okay. And do I hear a second? Motion's made in second.
Wait a minute, is it 10:15, is it Thursday, right?
Yeah, it's the Thursday.
Columbus Day.
Is there some problem?
Is that the date? Do we have, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, motion's made in second and for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes, ayes unanimously. Next thing before us is 2515, which is the Azia Athletic Club on 86A and 88 Old South Road. Okay.
All right. Stephen Cohen for the applicant. Mr. Chairman, you want me to just dive in?
Yep, just dive in.
We just got this, though, you know we just got this, right?
Right, so, I, before the meeting, distributed a proposed decision as a way to help you frame your ideas. I don't wanna be presumptuous that we would get an approval, but I think it's helpful to, you know, frame it for the commission. There's also a slightly updated landscaping plan, which is the same one that's up here. And I just wanna run you through where I think we are. What, what I heard last time from the commission was that this project was, you know, mostly verifiable, but that there were a few issues that you wanted to see addressed. And I think all of those are essentially the kinds of things that could be addressed in the, in your conditions, like the hours of operation and how we deal with special events and those kind of things. So, just as a reminder, this is an application for an MCD and site plan review and a special permit for a recreational facility with seeking waivers on, originally seeking waivers on open space, inclusionary housing, off-street parking and driveway access. We, we look like we're ending up at about 36% plus open space, so I don't think we're gonna need that waiver. The inclusionary housing, we do want the waiver for, but we're providing a two-bedroom house for the, for the manager. And the off-street parking and driveway access waivers sort of depend on how the commission decides on, on those issues. So, as you know, this is a three-acre site off Old South Road, composed of two parcels that would be combined. And they have about 75 feet of frontage running straight across the, where the old bike path is. 130 feet of frontage, I'm sorry. We're seeking to start with about 300 full-time members and about 200 off-season members. The fitness facility is all in the, essentially, the middle, one big building in the middle and then the house is towards the front. The house is about 800 square feet of ground cover and the facility is about 11,000 square feet of ground cover with about, just less than 22,000 square feet of usable space inside, so three levels, mostly in the basement. So, we're only at about 8.5% ground cover where 50% is allowed. The uses on the property would be a fitness center that would include classes and training and therapy for athletics with multipurpose squash courts, up to eight spa and therapy rooms, a 40-by-80 main pool, a 30-by, 34-by-18 spa pool with a couple of ancillary hot tubs and cold plunge pools. Those are, even though I call them pools, they're, you know, they're very small. Potentially a little putting green and volleyball court up on the north side. And a snack bar that would service guests, but only with pre-prepared foods and beverages. There would be no cooking on-site, everything would be cooked off, off-site and trucked in. There is a little reception and lounge area, there is onsite lockers and laundry, storage, office space, I said the two-bedroom house. And then the proposal is there would be, if there were any special events, that they would be in a tent at the north side of the property, which we have relocated since the beginning to move it away from the property line and to provide more green space and more screening between that and the, and the butters. The roadway is proposed as 20-foot wide, chip sealed, except it would have either a cobble or Belgian block apron on the Old South Road with a rumble strip and a stop sign before the bike path. There's a secondary emergency and service vehicle exit and entrance onto Egan Lane, which I think you already know is not actually really a road, it's just an easement, but it's paved. And the lot already has the easement rights to do that. Because the lot is currently used by contractors and landscapers, this is a lower intensity use in terms of the traffic than, than currently exists. And there is a dumpster sort of near the Egan Lane that's fenced in, that would, we propose daily trash pickup as well. I have a calculation for the parking, which I went through last time, sorry, I'm not gonna go through the, the whole list unless you want me to, but essentially, we're proposing 73 conforming spaces, of which three are handicap accessible. You can see they're, they're here. And then another 18 stacked parking spaces up by the turf field in the back. Those would be for reinforced turf or reinforced lawn and that would be only for special events where we would have attended parking with valets or something like that, that wouldn't be regular use. So, that gives us 73 spaces with an 18, 18 spaces for overflow. The calculation that we provided suggests that we need about 91 spaces, so we're seeking a waiver for the difference. Actually, I should correct myself, it's 91 spaces for the facility uses and if you use the facility for an event of up to 250 people, then you'd, then you'd need 63 spaces. So, we have more than enough spaces for the event and we're a little low on the facility. But I think that the, because of the type of use at these types of places where a lot of people are coming in for, you know, in and out for a squash game or they're coming in groups, if you have a family coming to the pool or something like that, and there's also redundant uses, so for example, you have the, the events and the pool use, you know, you don't really have both at the same time. Either you have the, the pool and exterior open or you have the event, you don't really have both, or you have the employee count includes a space for the manager, but the manager is living in the house that has a two-bedroom, you know, that also requires two-bedroom parking. So, there's a little bit of overlap. And then some of the uses, frankly, are fairly redundant of the facility. So, even though we're counting for, I think, 30 seats, yeah, 30 seats at the snack bar, the reality is it's the same people going to the gym or going to the pool and, you know, it's not a takeout restaurant, it's not a restaurant open to the public, it's just coolers with prepackaged food for people who happen to be at the pool at lunch or wanna grab a smoothie and, and a yogurt after their workout. So, it won't attract the same type of traffic that you would if it was a restaurant. The parking is not proposed anywhere, you could see it from Old South Road and it would be heavily screened at Old South Road. You can see everything is essentially behind the curb and the landscaping and the house. The conditions that we proposed, so like I said, we need, we do not, no longer need the applied-for open space requirement, we do need the inclusionary housing waiver that we provided for the house, for some housing, and we probably do need the off-street parking and driveway access. The conditions that we've proposed are that there would be a definitive plan to be approved and endorsed by the planning board before the issuance of a CO, of a building permit, sorry, that there would be installation of all of the infrastructure in accordance with the definitive plan and prior to the issuance of certificate occupancy, the installation of a stop sign before the Old South Road bike path, that all the legal documents would be recorded, that the applicant would perform a two-year parking study with the ability of the commission to open, reopen the hearing and impose additional conditions if the parking study or, or other events showed a negative impact and, and problems with the parking. We are proposing two, five bike racks on the plan, although I only put two in the, in the conditions. Proposing to provide nerd passes for all of the employees. We're proposing a $20,000 donation to the fund of the planning board's choice. My, my guess is that at the moment, you would want it to go to the in-town bike path, but I would defer to the commission to decide where the appropriate place to put that money would be. We are proposing a additional study that I don't know that you've done, but I think you might, I think it's a good idea that we would, in the same way we do a two-year parking study, we would do a two-year event study. So, we would provide the commission with a, a list of events in advance in, say, in May of what we're planning, what we're planning to have, so you'd know when they were gonna be. And then we would provide information, say, in January after we've had the events, we would tell you how big the event was, how many cars were parked there, whether or not there was attended parking or charter or buses or off-site, you know, how we handled it and what was successful and what wasn't. So, we could, and then again, with that, there would be the condition that the commission could reopen the hearing if there was a need to alter the conditions. We would have a condition that if there was an event for 100 people or less that involved the tent and music, that there would be no other exterior activities. So, you would essentially have the same people using all of the exterior facilities, not, you wouldn't have the pool and the spa open, I mean, the, and the tent and the event open for different people. And then if there was an event for more than 100 people, that you would have the entire facility closed except for the people attending. except for the people attending the event, so that there would be no double, there would be no double use for parking. We are proposing that there would be a limitation of special events, which I've defined for simplicity as events involving both a tent and amplified music, so which should be fairly easy for you to keep track of. That there would be a limitation of those as ten events per calendar year with no more than one event in July and no more than one event in August. And that would leave eight events for the shoulder season. The, that there would be no amplified music except for special events that could be heard beyond the property lines. So for example, if they put little speakers in the landscaping for around the pool, and they were turned down on volume, you know, one or two, you might hear it by the pool, but you can't hear it off-site, absolutely. You know, it's not, you know, DJ party at the pool. But if there was a special event that involved amplified music that could be heard beyond the property line, that that would follow a ten o'clock shutdown, which is standard under the noise bylaw, and that there would be, the event itself would have, would end by eleven, but the music would have to be off by ten. We're proposing hours of operation of six AM to eleven PM for the inside and seven AM to eight PM for the outside. There are no exterior activities that would involve lighting. There would be no lit field, no lit pool, no lit anything. You know, of course, there would be safety lighting and those kind of things under the, that would be required, but no nighttime lit activities, except for, you know, like lights in the tent or something like that, but not, you know, sporting events or pool events under the lighting. There would be a restriction that the house could only be used for employees, not rented out separately, and that the house would be, that the manager, there would always have to be a manager on-duty cellphone, and that that number would be provided to the planning board and to the police department and the fire department, as well as to any neighbor who asked for it. And that would be either the person living there or whoever the manager or on-duty was. It would, you know, the phone would run with the manager.
Oh, yeah.
You wouldn't have to get a number for every person. Proposing the dumpsters be kept in a fenced-in area and removed from the site daily, that the handicap spaces would comply with the Americans with Disability Act. Again, that there'd be no cooking at the facility except, you know, with an exclusion that if there was a catered event, a lot of times they have those little trucks that they heat up the food in. I don't think that really counts as cooking, but just in case. You know, there's no commercial kitchen, but you might have a little catering. That the utilities would be hooked up to municipal sewer and water and no new overhead lines, that there would be a site inspection scheduled with the engineering escrow fund set up as you usually do, and a pre-construction meeting with the standard staff involved. And that final as-built drawings and drainage plans would be provided to the commission before the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And I don't know if the commission has any additional concerns, but I'm happy to discuss either what the plan is or what the conditions might look like.
I'm having trouble getting past all of the, and I can go over it with you at another
time.
Mm-hmm.
All of the issues just with problems with the syntax. There's a lot of errors, technical clerical errors in this whole thing, all over the place. But I can go over that with you at another time.
You mean editing the decision?
Just correcting spelling, correct, double phrases. I mean, it's just, it's rife with problems, so it's not going anywhere right now.
Well, it's a draft decision.
It's a big-time draft.
It's a, it's a draft decision designed to be suggestive of conditions and finding...
Well, it's not a squash court, so we can go right past that.
I saw that type out, yes.
Okay. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of errors in here.
Thank you.
But if I'm going to get to the substantive stuff.
Yes, please.
I know one of the questions from somebody the last time, a neighbor. We were talking about three hundred memberships as opposed to three hundred individuals.
That's right.
So we're talking family memberships or whatever the family happens to constitute.
That's right.
So the occupancy of this place is what at peak?
Do you have that, Jeff?
Two hundred and twelve, two hundred and fifty. Fifty is four.
Well, the only reason I'm asking is let's say on a bad day.
Yeah.
You have three hundred memberships, and each one of them has three to five people in the family. That's a lot of people.
Right.
We don't obviously anticipate everybody being there at one time, but I think you need to come up with an occup, maximum occupancy of this place.
Well...
Because then it impacts the parking if a lot of these families with three to five kids show up there.
The occupancy of the building is different than the ability of the facility to hold the people, because most of the activities are outside.
Right. But the occupancy of the building itself is what?
Well, you know, like a squash court is huge, but you only have two people on it. So I don't know that the square footage is really the best way to think about this.
Well, you see where I'm headed with this thing, because it could get out of control if there's that many people in each family, and they all show up because it's raining at the beach. And they want to be inside, and just, just keep an eye on that, because that, if anything is going to go awry, it's going to be the noise from outside.
Right.
The tented events with amplified music.
Right.
Which never stays on the property. I know.
The sound?
I live right around the wedding factory in South Shore Road, and I know every person who's ever gotten married in that tent.
Right.
And I'm a good four-hundred feet away from it.
Right.
It's going to be, there's not enough parking, because on a peak day, there's not enough parking, or the noise is too much. Because those are the two issues that I think are going to come up. Nothing else is really going to arise from this thing.
Right.
Let me get past my edits.
Linda, while you're looking, let me just tell you, on the occupancy of the building, the only thing in the building is squash courts and a big gym filled with training equipment. And then there's, you know, some showers and lockers and, there's no, like, go hang out place where you could have three hundred people hanging out. There's no, it's not like at Great Harbor where they have that big, huge room. There is no room. So...
No event space.
Right, there's, exactly. There's no event space. There's no restaurant. There's no dining hall. You'd have to go hang out with your kids in the squash court and gym. Not, you know, it's just, it's not that kind of facility.
I think there's a couple of things missing. I think what you, you need to put in a condition about dark skies.
Well, I thought about that...
It's not inherent at all.
Yeah.
And because, and other things we've done of this size, downlighting, ground lighting is downlighting.
Yeah.
Obviously, the HCC is going to attack that. But I just want you to acknowledge that fact, because one of these statements here, that, number thirteen, number fourteen, that no exterior recreational athletic activity shall be performed with night lighting, there's no night lighting on those athletic fields. And I think that needs to be put in here, specifically no lighting on the athletic fields.
That's fine. There was no intent to...
I just want to be specific about that.
Yeah.
Did we decide that we were going to do exterior events between July one and September first, or what did we do with that? We didn't do, we didn't limit that the last time, right?
We didn't have a discussion of dates.
Okay.
Just on your idea of dark skies, when I did put in the no activities under night lighting, the reason why I didn't include that is it's already in the zoning bylaw. And I think staff has encouraged us not to have conditions that are redundant of the bylaw itself.
Okay. It's just that we see it come up all the time, anyway.
Right.
The, another thing in this section. Oh, the pool and exterior uses, except special events, may be opened from seven AM through eight PM daily? That word's missing?
I don't...
Because the health club closes down at six. They're different from the rest of the week on a Sunday. So I didn't know if this was every single day of the week.
Yeah, the intent would be daily. If you wanted more clarification, we could...
And I know there was one thing we did talk about, that no, there should be no amplified sounds associated with events. And I assume, is that exterior events or all events? After ten PM, that all events shall end by eleven PM? I know we spoke about eleven being a little late.
Well, what...
Because of the, we don't know how this is going to wash out. Obviously, after the first summer, we'll figure that out. But we don't know if at eleven PM, immediately proximate, all those residences back in there is going to be a problem, because nothing out there is open till eleven PM. And that's what concerned me the last time, and I mentioned it the last time, that I think eleven PM is a little late. I think all events need to cease by ten.
Yeah. I thought we talked about the music ending at ten or ten-thirty, and we went with ten, but...
I'm still not comfortable with eleven o'clock right now. I mean, obviously, when things start going, things are fine, we can readjust that. But I'm not comfortable with anything that says eleven o'clock for any reason on that property the first summer of operation. Obviously, we revisit the following fall to see how things went. But that was a big concern for me. And I want to get back to the cooking thing.
Yeah.
When we were doing a lot of this stuff at the ZBA, and they didn't want to do cooking, they did have a kitchen in there. They, what they did not have was a need for a ventilator. They didn't have any need for a fryolator. But they had a kitchen. If not for anything else but to make coffee, have a sink, have a refrigerator like the health club has.
Yeah.
Where you have beverages and stuff like that that are kept cold. I think you really need to think about the kitchen aspect of this. It's not a full catering kitchen, but it would be just, got cold beverages in the icebox. We have a sink. We have a microwave or whatever. We have a coffee maker, and we have a way to clean stuff and things like that. I have yet to go to a health club that doesn't have some form of that available to the staff, if not the membership on top of it, at least an icebox available, you know, the glass front things.
Yeah.
So I think you really need to revisit that. It was always the fryolator and the vents that were restricted in all of these things that I worked on all those years, because that was the problem, the smell and the noise.
Right.
So if, I wouldn't have a problem with you putting a kitchen in this thing for somebody, for whatever, however you want it to be used. I think that's kind of something that goes along with this stuff.
Toaster, microwave, coffee maker, kind of thing?
Icebox, sink, that kind of stuff.
Right.
So you said you don't need the open space anymore. Is this going to be a fully cut twenty-foot-wide entrance? Because not even the roads around here are cut open to twenty feet. Just saying. Most of the roads around here don't get to twenty feet. They're laid out at forty feet, but there's not twenty feet open.
Yeah. No, I think...
That's pretty wide.
Like Fairgrounds Road, I think, is eighteen feet wide.
Yeah. And twenty feet open with, you know...
If you want it to be narrower, it can be, but part of it is the ability to be able to back out of parking spaces.
Which are more interior than they are. I'm just talking about the entrance way.
Oh, just the entrance, not the whole thing?
Yeah. And it, it looks like you've got a twenty-foot-wide driveway entrance.
Yeah.
That's, that's a big concern to me. I don't think it should be twenty feet wide paved.
We could certainly shrink from like the house to the road to make it look narrower there.
Yeah. That's my only other issue with that. But I think otherwise, it's, it's a good plan, once you and I fix the typos. Otherwise, I don't really have much to say, except, is there a thing in here, I went through it pretty quickly, saying that we revisit this after the first full summer of operation?
It's in there.
It's in here somewhere? Okay.
Yeah.
That was the only other thing I wanted to add.
I don't think there was a typo on either.
You never know. I haven't gotten that far. Volleyball is one word, by the way, Steve.
Thank you.
They're all over the place in here. I can tell you...
Anyone else, are you all sat there?
Yeah, I'm all set.
All right. Anyone else on the board?
One quick comment, Ms. Chairman.
Ms. McGlough?
Question on, looking at Mr. Pesci's comments. There were eighteen comments, and nine of them commented as partially addressed. Why isn't it finished, complete? Why is it partially addressed? Any questions by Mr. Pesci?
Mr. Pesci's comments were submitted to the planning board at eight-thirty on Friday, and we received them this morning. So I think, is that what you're referring to?
My question, describe to me what partially addressed means. You have not completed the request that was made by him.
Right. Well, again, Mr. Pesci submitted those comments at eight-thirty on Friday, and the staff report was done, I think, this morning. I would defer to the staff to see if they have any concerns based on further review.
Well, it's happened in the past. It should be complete when you finally get the final submission here from Mr. Pesci. You got to get in earlier, so you read it for the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Borcher.
I just have a couple of comments. I'm going to echo Ms. Williams on some concerns that I had. I actually mentioned it as well, previous meetings. First of all, there's, is it two-hundred-and-fifty members or three-hundred? Two-fifty. Okay, thanks. I'm having some problems being comfortable with the eleven o'clock. I have viewed the site. Three sides of the site are residential. Across the street is residential. I understand that Old South Road is a commercial corridor. However, what I'm comfortable with is music and events ending at ten o'clock. And I'm also comfortable, more comfortable with interior events ending at ten o'clock as well. So departing patrons and guests can be out by ten-thirty, eleven o'clock, instead of eleven-thirty or midnight. This is my logic on this. Otherwise, basically, I think it's a good plan. I think it's a good use of the property. I think it'll benefit a lot of people. And I think you've been very generous about some community work with the field, so to speak, for a team, maybe, for some practice. But I just have a problem with the end, end times. So if we could just think about that, as far as the neighbors or residential neighborhoods, I'm going to have to play the advocate for the residential neighborhood. I feel comfortable with ten o'clock inside and out done. And I think that's okay. I think six AM to ten is okay. I think you're going to have plenty of time. And I think that I feel more comfortable with that time, inside and out, for events, whether it's a hundred people, or fifty, or whatever, or more than a hundred. The other thing that I wanted to mention was, I was under the impression from the last couple of meetings on this, that the events with more than a hundred people would be not in July and August. They would be in the shoulder seasons. That's what I understood. Now we're talking about one in July and one in August. I think you should have the events that are bigger than a hundred in the shoulder seasons only. And I feel comfortable with that more than having them in the summer, the peak of the summer.
Okay.
And otherwise, I think it's a beautiful facility. It's a good use of this property. So basically, I just have those issues with the time.
Thank you, Mr. Borcher.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the board?
Go ahead, Matt.
The donation might be to something other than that in town, might be to in-town sidewalk repair, which is something that we need to address, and is getting a lot of, you know, attention.
Yeah. I would defer to the staff to make sure of the donation.
Yeah, no, no. Yeah, I've already mentioned that to them. I'm just saying that, just for the record. The ten o'clock and then the eleven shutdown, God. I mean, amplified music at ten because of the town bylaw as well, which makes sense. How long does it take to, you know, clean up and, you know, get everybody out of a place? I mean, you can't write ten-thirty. I mean, it's kind of weird, you know? You have to have round numbers. So I, I think end by eleven is, everybody's really already gone, sort of. You know what I mean? I think that, I, I don't have a problem with it, but I understand what everyone's saying. I think that falls under the first year reopening the public hearing pot, Steve, in my, in my opinion. We went through this with, I feel like we're looking at a ditto of Millie's, you know, with all this different stuff, you know? And we've really, you know, with these special permits and these things, we don't really know how things are going to pan out. I do agree, Linda, on that kitchen thing, by the way. It's not a kitchen. It's just an area that food gets brought by caterers, and they have a place to clean, hot water and sinks and all that. But it does take time to break down an event. It doesn't just happen in two seconds. So I see what you're saying. You're saying an hour, but it doesn't have to be an hour. It might be less. It depends.
The event is over at ten, and then we break down. That's how we whip it.
No. Yeah, okay.
It's different.
Yeah, you know...
You have to break down at midnight.
We can, we can live with ending the event at ten with the, with the idea that...
Instead of just amplified music and ending the event...
Then you break down for an hour.
Yeah, right. I think that's, yeah, okay. If that's okay with you guys, and that's...
Although, you know...
I think that's what everyone's saying.
I don't know if the other members of the commission feel the same way, but I don't know that I would apply the same to the inside. I think if you're inside a building, we could maybe go in the other hour. But again...
Not for now.
What?
Not right now.
Not right now, okay. Then maybe not. But then maybe not.
Anyone else on the board?
I, Mr. Cohen, I have to agree with my colleagues at this point. People love to straggle at times, and I think if you give them until the end of whatever hour, they'll straggle afterwards. Even if they're inside, there's times when they commune in the parking lot afterwards. I think 10 o'clock is responsible.
Okay.
So I, I want to stay consistent with my colleagues. Um, the other thing too, I'm a little concerned about is, is your special events. Because when I brought that situation up, it was special events, not tented events, not internal events, not external events. It's special events, period. And I think that's something that's been consistent with this board from, from, no matter where we've worked with, it's 10 special events. I understand that maybe you don't prefer to have them inside the building at this juncture, but that can change. And I think keeping the language as simple as 10 special events per year covers it, no matter where they're held.
Yeah.
And, and that was the other thing too, is that, I'm looking through the staff report here, and I do kind of remember we were saying not in July and August as well too. Everything would center outside of that, into the shoulder seasons.
Yeah, we, we can do no events greater than 100 persons in, in this, in July and August, if that, I think that's what Carl had said.
Okay.
And then the, um, I, I just want to be clear that, um, there is no real event space inside, which is, which is fine. You know, and if my clients want to make it in the squash court or something, maybe they will. But it's not, this facility doesn't have a hall space.
Right, and I, I understand that, but I'd rather not, I'd rather be a little preemptive at this point.
Sure.
So that if you do decide to change features inside the facility or something, or you decide, gee, you know, we want to, we want to put mats down in the squash court, let's just be clear from the onset. Um, I think when you just keep it that broad-ended, it, it, it suffices to deal with it no matter where they're being held, either internal, external.
I, I, I think that's fine, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Staff, did you have anything? Leslie, Andrew? Yes?
Mr. Chairman, I looked over the decision that was prepared and other than some minor typographical things, I didn't have anything major to add. I think the Ed Pesci report that lists some items as being partially addressed could easily be completed when the final plan set is approved by the board at a later time.
Okay.
So if you were inclined to close the hearing tonight, the Pesci stuff could be closed out at a later time.
All right. This is, uh, a public hearing at this point, so, um, if anyone would like to comment on this? I'm not seeing anyone stepping up to the plate at this point.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Do I hear a second to that?
Second.
Motion's now made and seconded. Uh, discussion on the issue? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 And Mr. Borcher, I'm going to activate you for this, I'm so sorry. And I trust you're in the affirmative, sir? Okay, good. So that's a five to zero vote to close the public hearing at this point.
We're going to need a new draft plan. Is that coming back from the office, or are we coming back in here?
I think according to what I'm hearing from Leslie, Mr. Cohen, and I don't see Andrew saying anything, that you, pretty much what you see before you and everything we've talked about can be incorporated into a final decision for us to sign at the next meeting. Uh, that there's nothing really substantial that we need to go back and forth about.
Do we need to hold it to the next meeting now, Leslie or Mason?
No, we can make the changes that you talked about tonight, which were all fairly minor, free to sign in the office. The only somewhat significant plan change was reducing the driveway width, which they can do on the final plan, along with the Pesci comments.
Because they specifically call out 20-foot width in here for the driveway, so I just, that has to change.
Yeah, we'll change that.
Whatever it's going to be.
Beginning of it's going to be wide, but she's talking about the interior.
No, I'm talking about the entrance. This is 20 feet wide, which is wider than the road it's coming off of.
Mr. Chairman, can I get some clarification on the driveway width? How narrow do you want it to go down to? 16?
How much?
That's how wide Burnell Street is, 18.
You've got a sidewalk running along the side of it, right?
All right, if, if, if we're going to keep going round robin here at this point, I will tell you, we're going to wait till next month. I will reopen the public hearing at this stage because-
Does anybody else have it?
This needs, this needs to be settled. So let's, let's either get this thing together-
What do you guys think? 18? 18, fine.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, through you, to staff, and the hours of operation, will that be 11, 10?
That'll be 10.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll see it before we sign it.
What?
I mean the events specifically, and the, the hours per event, things like that.
My-
10 with music and event.
Mr. Chairman, my notes were for the event, including the music, to end by 10.
Yeah.
And with everyone off the site by 11.
That means people get to hang until 11, that's what we don't want. So, the event ends at 10, you're heard them out the door. And then the staff has to break down, because it takes us at least an hour, an hour and a half to break down something like this.
No, I, I, I think the, the concept of having a, an event that, where the music ends at 10 and the event ends at 11 is what was proposed. And what the commission said was, no, we want everything to end at 10.
At 10.
That, that's clear, that's fine. We're not trying to keep the party going.
Gotcha.
Chairman on the motion.
We're kind of in a discussion phase.
I haven't actually made the motion yet.
There is no motion, but go ahead, John.
Okay, uh, my, my comment is, uh, what I'm worried about is like, uh, those nine items by Mr. Pesci. Pesci, Pesci, Piski, whatever his name is.
Pesci.
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 And he makes comments that things, you know, that, uh,
Kill them.
Comments that it's, it's not, what is here is not on the plans.
Ken.
He's saying things aren't on the plans, and they should be before we, before we approve it.
Ken, I just do you a favor at this point, John, because when I read what was in the, the, the staff report, and I'm going to go back to Leslie and Andrew, the issues that Mr. McGlaughlin is, are referring to can be readily resolvable, am I correct? So, John? John? Leslie, would you just say that out loud so Mr. McGlaughlin hears it?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, the details in the Pesci report that still need to be addressed are minor in nature and can be addressed on the final plan set that the board will vote on at a later time. And that's standard practice of the board to leave some of the details until the final plan set. All right, an example, um-
I was thinking of, um, uh, the one that said the, um, the vegetation, number, number nine. Yeah, that, that, you could use more, sending out in both the east and west directions in a proposed exit. We find that these areas be shown in notes on the plan, no, it's the other one. This area will be landscaped. However, the landscape sheet does not show any particular landscaping for these locations yet. That's what I'm saying, it's number 15. Have you seen, some of these that have not been addressed, maybe they should be addressed before they release a plan that shows that it has not been addressed. You know, that could happen. That's why I'm questioning.
And Mr. Pesci will do a final review before the plan is presented to the board for a vote.
We get to sign the landscape.
Right.
I explained it.
Does that help now?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
In the body, it says five bike racks, you mentioned it up there, but in the conditions, it says two bike racks. Is it two or five? Five, all right, because in the conditions, it says two. So they have to track. No, you said they were, they didn't realize they didn't track.
Mr. Borcher.
I think it's perfectly reasonable to stop everything at 10 o'clock. I think the management of the club will wind it down as quickly as possible by 10:30, a quarter of 11. And I think that's fine, I'm very comfortable with that. Thank you.
I will make, did we already vote on closing it, right? Okay.
Voted on, close.
I'll make a motion to approve with the changes noted, with a draft to be signed in the office. If there's something amiss, then we just fix the draft until it's correct. Until the typos are fixed.
All right, let's- Motion is now made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously, thank you. Okay. Next thing before us at this point, thank you, is 35-15, which is the Scottsack Casino at 1113 New Street. For the applicant.
Is it Arthur?
No, it's Sarah.
Sarah.
Yeah, thank you. Sarah Alter, good evening. I think you're up.
I am. I just don't know which one I'm up to.
You are up to Scottsack Casino.
Okay.
How's that?
Excellent.
Beautiful.
Okay, so this is a, an application, Sarah Alter for the applicant. An application to modify, um, an existing special permit. Uh, the previous special permits were granted by the zoning board. We're now before you because what we're proposing, which is a neighborhood employee dormitory, is by, um, special permit from this board under the definition of neighborhood employee dormitory in section 139.2 of the zoning bylaw. Uh, the property is currently improved with three tennis courts, a little shed, that I think they call a pro shop, and two single-family dwellings that are currently limited to five occupants total. The building that used to be part of the Chanticleer property, if they want to add three bedrooms and a kitchen to the basement, that would convert it to a neighborhood employee dormitory. I don't believe there are any other neighborhood employee dormitories in the general vicinity anymore. And, um, that would bring eight people into that building, and with the remaining five for 13, I think the application said a total, a total of no more than 18, because that's what the bylaw is, puts as the limit.
Sorry.
But you're willing to live, because I recognize this decision well, I wrote it.
Yes.
But, um, you're willing to live with a cap at 13 at the moment? Just so people don't freak out with that 18?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, because I remember all the discussions as to why this condition was put into the ZBA decision. Said nobody wanted a dormitory in their neighborhood, but 13 people is reasonable given that structure, and I know it well. But 18, just-
I think, well, and I also think, um, I think things have changed significantly since this decision was originally drafted. I mean, at one point, the Chanticleer, um, under its previous management, they had a lot of people living in the back, and there were a lot of parties, and it was loud and disruptive, and all of that has been reined in. I think Susan Handy's doing an incredible job over at the Chanticleer property. And the casino keeps a pretty tight leash on its people. Um, they're not restaurant people, so they're not coming home at 2:00 in the morning and, um, partying. They're tennis people, and they've been beaten up all day long. So they're, I think they're pretty much early to bed.
But you're willing to live with it?
Yeah.
Just say 13, so there's no question with these people? Okay, I have no problem with this at all.
Okay. Board members, anyone else have any comments on this? Anything, Andrew, Leslie? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing at this point, would anyone like to comment on it?
Motion to close the public hearing?
And before we do that, Diane, I'm going to activate you for this one. Okay, thank you. So is a motion made and seconded to close the public hearing? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, eyes have unanimously.
I'll make a motion to approve with a cap at 13.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, there's probably one.
I'd also like for you all to vote to include a, like a dormitory management plan to be on file with the planning board.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And that would include having it posted as to what the number is and all that stuff?
Correct.
Okay, we've got a million of those. That's part of my motion.
All right. Motion's now made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, eyes have unanimously, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I do appreciate it. Okay, next thing before us is 36-15, John Sodarsky and Suzanne Slisser on 17 Helen Stride. Mr. Brescher, good evening.
Good evening, for the applicant attorney, John Brescher, representing, uh, Mr. John Sodarsky and Ms. Suzanne Slisser. Uh, what you have before you is a special permit request under zoning bylaw section 139, um, 8C, 8C, for a special permit to create a secondary residential lot for year-round residents. Um, I have, I believe you have a copy of the site plan in your packet. Uh, in addition to the standard special permit, uh, we were also requesting relief in order to define the lot area of a pre-existing non-conforming lot. The lot has approximately 16,000 square feet in R20 zoning. Um, and additionally, we'd like to waive the setback requirements between the primary and secondary lot. Specifically, the covenant house would be violating the side yard setback, being as close as approximately 1.7 feet from the side yard setback in a district that would require a 10-foot side yard setback. Otherwise, it's the standard secondary lot permit.
Yeah, go ahead.
Normally, a side yard setback violation is a variance, because this is a, um, secondary lot, we can adjust the side yard setbacks-
That's, that's correct.
-by special permit.
Correct, you have the authority to do so. Yep.
Because it's a little bit of a, an anomaly.
Yeah. Okay, I have no problem with this, I know both structures.
Okay, anyone else on the board? Anything from Andrew, Leslie? No?
No, but, Mr. Chairman, you're going to activate an alternate.
I will do such shortly. I just need to open the public hearing and then we'll- Yeah. So ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to comment on it? Okay.
Can I?
Uh, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Is the proposed parking existing in that, uh, location now?
Um, that is an excellent question, uh, and I, I believe, I believe that is, but I'm, I'm honestly not positive. I see that it's referred to as proposed, proposed driveway and proposed parking.
He hit, the, the parking is in front of the structure, up there on the street, Diane, now. They're just adding, I believe, the two spaces to separate the spaces for the, uh,
I think that's right.
Each lot gets two spaces. So the driveway that you see coming in is already there with the two spaces.
I know that-
Those other two are added. You're going to have to go to the HCC for it anyway.
That's what-
Parking is tight over there on Helen's Drive, as you know, you delivered mail there. Motion to close the public hearing?
And, John, I'm going to activate you for this one, okay? Thank you.
I thought you just activated Diane.
No, that was for the previous one. No, that was for the previous one.
We're going too fast.
Oh my.
No.
That's unusual to hear you say that. All right, so motion's been made and seconded to close the public hearing. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously, and the pleasure of the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's now made and seconded for discussion.
John seconded, Catherine.
Yes, Mr. McLaughlin seconded. Motion's now made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And that is going to bring us to thirty-seven dash fifteen, Straight Wharf LLC, twenty Straight Wharf, hello again.
Yes, hello, Sarah Alger for the applicant. This, again, is a special permit, it's a modification to an existing zoning board special permit, now under the jurisdiction of the planning board, under 139.30A, because restaurants are classified as a commercial use under the use chart in seven. I don't know if you're going to be seeing a lot of these or not, but the reason that we're here is that the special permit provided that we had an eighty-one-seat restaurant, the certified building occupancy is a hundred and twenty people. There were more than eighty-one people in the building at one point, and an issue developed, and the building commissioner suggested that we needed to come back here and clarify that while we want to keep the eighty-one seats, that we're able to have building occupancy up to a hundred and twenty people. That is why I am here.
All right, so...
It doesn't trigger, I don't believe, trigger any other additional relief or anything by this board at this point.
Got it. So board members, is there any discussion on this issue?
No, but you're not asking to increase the seats, you're just asking to solidify that it's a hundred and twenty foot, a hundred and twenty people occupancy.
Occupancy, on the first floor, yes. That way, people can come in and be standing, waiting, not seating at seats. The seats would remain at the eighty-one.
Okay. Andrew, please.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I don't know if you had talked, Sarah, to the fire department. One issue that was raised that I learned about today was that if it's over a hundred and, it's over a hundred, there has to be a sprinkler system.
Right.
Is the building sprinkled now?
You know, I don't know, but if it needs to be, it will be.
Okay, I mean, I don't think that affects what this board is doing, but just so you know, there may be some other building code regulations that you have to follow as well.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I remember going in the building and asking about the sprinkler system because I looked at the, we were dealing with a vent system, which got all complicated. And then we were dealing with the dwelling units and the office upstairs.
I think because of that, there's sprinkling.
And I believe he told me it was sprinkled because they had, they had the mixed use. They had the restaurant with the kitchens and those big vents.
Yep.
And then they had the dwelling units up there.
It'll still get verified.
So I think that's, I don't think they have a problem with that, because they told me how much it cost.
Yeah. All right, so hearing nothing more from board staff, this is a public hearing, if anyone would like to comment on it?
Who are you activating?
Seeing no comments, I'm going to activate Mr. Borcher.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Do I hear a second discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion to approve.
Motion's now made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. These are all to be signed in the office, I just don't keep them in here to add that, guys.
No, I think that's kind of obvious. I don't think that needs to necessarily be part of the motion, because they do get signed somehow.
Somehow.
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, that was unanimous vote by the board as well. Next thing before us is thirty-eight dash fifteen, the Emporium of Nantucket, this is an amendment to the MCD, this is on fifty-four and fifty-four R. Old South Road.
Good evening, Don Bracken from Bracken Engineering, representing the applicant. This is from the third modification to this MCD. There are no physical changes to the site plans, the parking grading, everything remains the same. The proposed changes consist of adding another lower level to the storage facility, also decreasing the amount of retail space and adding another two-bedroom apartment where the retail space is being removed. Those changes actually result in a reduction of the required parking spaces. The previously approved plan, we had required thirty-eight spaces, under the current uses proposed, required thirty-six spaces. You may recall, we did get a waiver on the number of parking spaces, so it's less of a waiver than was originally required.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or discussion at this stage? Andrew Leslie, anything from your end? Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I have one question about the addition of the third two-bedroom apartment. Are you proposing those as apartments under the CN district? Or the employee apartments?
I believe they're employee apartments, you know that's the...
Should they be restricted to employees only, or we need to offer them to employees first?
I just wanted to clarify, if you're asking for apartments, or if you're adding employee units?
I believe we're asking for apartments, I thought that this whole...
Stephen Maury, I thought that this whole application was being heard under the CN zoning already. Just, so, that's what we planned to do, just another apartment.
Yep, they can have three, John. The board's saying, yeah, the staff's saying yes.
My question, do you have to go through the board to get the third one? Is this a request for a third?
Yep, it's part of your special permit consideration. It has to be a special permit issued by the board. Yep.
Thank you, okay, I'm catching it here.
Great.
Thank you.
Anything else from you guys or from the board? Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing, if anyone would like to comment on this. If not, Diane, I'm going to activate you for this one.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Motion's now made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion to approve with the, did you see the condition in here?
Yes, about the signage.
About the two spaces? That's okay? Okay, that's my motion with staff's recommendation on that condition.
Got it. Motion's now made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Do you need a few minutes?
Keep going.
All right. So, board members, you have eleven A&Rs before you at this point, one I know you'll want to isolate out, which is seven, eight, six, seven.
Okay, I'll make a motion to endorse all of the A&R, seven, eight, six, two, Bridges, seven, eight, six, three, Alger, seven, eight, six, four, Hobart, seven, eight, six, five, Shaw, seven, eight, six, six.
Bearely.
Bearely, it's actually Bearely.
Bearely?
Yep. And skipping, seven, eight, six, seven, Coonahan, seven, eight, six, eight for approval, Walsh, seven, eight, six, nine, McGee. Where am I going next?
Seven, eight, seven, zero.
Oh, God, I just hit the wrong page. Which one?
Seven, eight, seven, zero, Williams.
Oh, there it is. Seven, eight, seven, zero, Williams, seven, eight, seven, one, Town of Nantucket, seven, eight, seven, two, Boardman.
Okay, so that motion's made, and... Motion's now made and seconded for discussion.
Chairman, I'm going to abstain on seven, eight, seven, two.
Seven, eight...
He's abstaining on seven, eight, seven, two, he should abstain for the whole thing, then.
That's okay, well, just, that's okay. All right, so for everything that was listed except for seven, eight, six, seven and up through seven, eight, seven, one, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Say aye. Those opposed? Ayes have it unanimously, that's four to two, so on seven, eight... No, seven, eight, seven, two, I'm just going to call this one separately since Mr. McLaughlin's going to abstain. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That's a three to oh vote by the board with Mr. McLaughlin abstaining on seven, eight, seven, two. That now brings us to seven, eight, six, seven, Daniel Coonahan, and you have some information. So Andrew Leslie, do you want me to turn it over to you first, or Mr. Bracken?
Maybe planning staff first, I'm just here to stand in, actually, so...
So, I'm going to turn it...
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, this is a forty-one eighty-one L division of one lot into two, both of the structures predate nineteen fifty-five. The standard that the board uses is that each lot has to have at least twenty feet of frontage or an easement adequate to provide access to the lots. Lot B, although it has a triangular sliver of frontage, it does not have any practical vehicular access to the rear of the lot. Paul Jensen, representing the owner, did send an email today to staff attempting to address our concerns, it didn't, I expected him to be here tonight to explain. And he's not here, so I don't know if Mr. Bracken has...
He did ask me to step in, apparently he couldn't be here. The only thing that I would relay is that he intended on placing an easement on the lot to provide access to that back cottage, and also for the parking space. And his thought was, he couldn't create the easement at this time until the lots have been separated and they're in separate ownership, because you can't give any easement to yourself. So the proposed easement, I brought a colored description, but you can get the gist of it. The proposed easement would encompass one of the parking spaces in the front and then run between the new lot line and the existing house. There will be a six-foot wide easement, a six-foot wide access point along that strip to get to the rear cottage, which is actually all they have right now because the existing lot line, you know, is here right now. So it doesn't change the physical access to the cottage as of right now. But an easement will be placed to at least have permanent, at least walking, walking ability to get to the structure.
Mr. Chairman, through you, do they use this track?
No, they don't, that's deceiving, it's, the property was divided, I think it was nineteen ninety-seven, at the time, they owned all the land, they just never removed those tracks. I think that's a vacant lot in the front.
Go ahead, what are you thinking, Leslie?
Mr. Chairman, we have some other concerns.
Okay.
I would like to ask the applicant to withdraw it for tonight, and maybe we can get it worked out between now and the next meeting.
Do you want to withdraw it, or you just want to hold it?
Well, we can't hold it because of the...
Oh, that's right, because it's an A&R.
Right.
Yes, you're absolutely right, I'm so sorry. You get locked in certain mindframes here sometimes.
And I think it would be recommended for the board to waive the filing fee.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, just waive that.
Yep. Mr. Bracken, is that acceptable?
Yes, that's acceptable.
Okay. So, do one of you want to make a motion at this point to accept the withdrawal?
Allow, I'll make a motion to allow the withdrawal without prejudice and to waive the filing fee on the reapplication.
Okay, the motion's now made and seconded for discussion on the issue. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously.
Thank you.
I just want to make a quick note here. Okay. Next thing that brings us to is that you have five secondary dwellings at this point. Does the board wish to isolate anything out from the second?
Yep, Mattocham.
Mattocham, okay. Anything else?
Nope.
All right, do you want to...
I'll make a motion to approve Woodstock, one oh one Cliff Road, Hassold, three oh six Maticet Road, Triniello, Sparks Avenue, and Forty-seven Boulevard.
Okay, that motion's now made.
Per staff recommendation.
Per staff recommendations, and do I hear a second? Motion's now made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it unanimously. A second, you'll excuse me. You can start the show up here.
Okay. Where are you going, just right there? Andrew, I'm looking at the conditions on this Mattocham Valley thing. They're going to cut the two miles that it takes to get to this property?
Actually, I think that we probably would like this held over.
Yeah.
Because normally, we don't, we have not approved any second dwellings in this general area due to the fact that the road is still, the sort of ongoing maintenance of the road issue has not been resolved. So I would ask that the board hold this over to the next meeting.
Well, that was going to be my suggestion. I have seen this secondary dwelling, it's about the size of my walk-in closet, just so you know, because this whole project's been at the HCC for a while. And the one house that is there is pretty, is like a one-story house type of thing, is just elevating it, so it's still once, basically a one-story house, and this other thing is really small, it's like it's lucky to have a bedroom.
Gotcha.
So it's a glorified studio, basically, and I'd hate to see them have to widen two miles at sixteen feet.
Well...
The whole road is a problem, but...
Generally, you know, we've allowed studios or those types of units here, but not full secondary dwellings because of the access issue.
Really tiny.
So, again, I think you ought to continue the matter, so we can have a further discussion and look at what the board has done in the past, so you're not at variance with that.
Somebody want to make a motion to hold Brendan Johnson, eighteen Mattocham Valley, over to October four... Say what?
Fifteenth.
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And who do I, I don't activate anybody for that.
No, no.
Okay. Ready.
Thank you for doing that.
Previous plans, we should do them one at a time, because there's issues of home estate.
Oh, I, yeah, we are, we usually do these one at a time. So the first thing before us at this point, and previous plans, is twenty-one dash oh five, Nantucket Properties One, forty and forty-two, Nap, Nobdier Farm Road.
Mr. Burdette, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening. When we were here last, I think we were fairly close to having the board be comfortable with some of the proposals we were making in order to restrict some of the, to release the restrictions on these properties. The direction from the board was for us to come up with a further proposal, speak with staff, so the board could gain some comfort. And by the way, if there are any board members who want to refresh her in what we're talking about, I can certainly go through it, but we've been here, I think, a few times.
I think we've been through this for quite several months now, so...
Right, right, we've been here a while.
Yeah.
So what I've done is I've submitted a letter to you, Mr. Chairman and board members, that outlines a proposal, which is that any of the owners of these condominium units which would like a restriction are able to release that, have that restriction released from the board with a payment of one percent of the purchase price if they were to sell their unit. The, what I envision is a, an amendment to the restriction, both in the decision as well as in the condominium documents, that would allow someone the option of having this restriction released without the requirement to do so. What we have, what we envision is a payment of one percent to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Just to refresh everyone's recollection, these are not affordable housing units. I'm not sure there really are affordable housing units on Nantucket, as an aside, but these are what are termed affordable housing units under Nantucket's bylaw. Nonetheless, that's the proposal we have, is to, is to make that contribution to the trust fund.
Board members?
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I forgot one important piece of that, is that it would be on an ongoing basis. I think you might remember, Mr. Marklinger suggested last time that, similar to the way the land bank is paid on each transaction, the restriction would not be released permanently if this amount were paid one time.
All right, not hearing anything from my board, I'm going to say something at this point. Yeah? Did you have... Yeah, thank you.
As, oh, okay, because I had my, we both had our hands up, go ahead.
That's okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see either of your hands up. Go ahead, Mr. Borcher, and I'll reserve for a minute, and then I'll turn it over to Linda.
I just have a quick comment, I'm passionately for housing, for workforce folks, and I'm passionately for peak season employee housing. So I think I'm at odds with you, Mr. Burdette, in a friendly way. Was there something about some lending difficulties that was involved with this discussion?
Yeah.
Do you mind the short answer on that, to refresh my memory? I'm very passionate about affordable, about employee housing and the way this is set up right now.
Sure.
So I just need to hear a little more about the lending issue, and then I'll...
Sure, the way that this came up when we initially made the application to the board, and I might add, the zoning board of appeals as well, we had to get relief from both, there was a pending sale of one of these units, I didn't represent either party, but agreed to come to the board to get, try to get this restriction released because the lender would not lend money to the purchaser because this restriction existed. And what I had mentioned to you before is, I think in that case, I think ultimately they did, because the person was going to use it for peak seasonal housing. But I think, you know, what I had mentioned before when I was here is that this problem can arise, and I think scare some lenders, irrespective of who's buying the property, because at the end of the day, the lender wants to know that if this person doesn't pay for their mortgage, they can foreclose and sell it without restrictions. And I think it's the, it's the kind of restriction that might chill a lender.
So in other words, people want to use it for seasonal housing instead of year-round or peak employee housing? Is that correct?
Well, right. If, if they want to use it, they'd have to ask the board to release the restriction and pay if they were gonna make a sale.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Bodat.
Sure.
Go ahead, you're up.
What was the price that was offered for that unit? Ballpark.
I mean, couldn't have been more than $500,000, I think?
As the chairman of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which just met today about raising funds and ways to restrict, um, affordable units or buying and, buying covenants for affordable units from people who already have low rents on their apartments, um, I think realizing that kind of money when they can't really do that right now, um, and only offering 1%, which is like $3,000 to $5,000, to lose the units is not really enough, frankly. So, if they're going to realize this kind of extreme benefit, where right now, they're clearly not, then they need to, I hate to use the word cough up, but they need to be, they need to pay for the ability of losing those units, restricted units to year-round, whether they're affordable, you know, under the 80%, 100% of the 150 covenant. They're more affordable as a restricted year-round unit than they would be on the open market. I appreciate it, and, and I could actually buy into this solution, because we're creating affordable units. Andrew was at the same meeting today. We would be creating affordable options for people if we raise funding for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is a 501(c)(3), um, qualified. But I think 1% is not enough to realize, you know, at least probably a couple hundred grand in profit on a unit that is gonna become unrestricted. So, I'm, you know, I'm not being greedy here, but I think, just looking at it on the face of it, whether it's Affordable Housing Trust Fund, or Housing Nantucket, or whatever, Habitat, 1% is not really a big penalty for getting out of a restriction that they couldn't get out of otherwise.
I, well, that, that was the purpose of making it on an ongoing basis. Remember, there are, you know, we're, we're just one condominium development. There are eight units in this one.
I know.
There are over 100 that exist, okay? You know, on, on one sale, say a $500,000 sale, $600,000 sale, five or six, five or $6,000, right? On an ongoing basis, the next time that unit is sold, if the person wants the release again, to pay it again.
Not on the same unit. Once the unit's released, it's gone.
No, that's what I'm proposing, is that it's ongoing. That's what I meant when I said, it's kind of like the land bank. Any, any sale, again, they don't have to, they could if, in other words, if I buy it, I'm a year-round resident. I don't, I don't have to, if I'm buying it and I'm gonna sell it to a year-round resident, I don't have to lift the restriction. But if I have someone who wants to buy it, who is not a year-round resident, they can pay it.
Somebody would have to...
And it would be on an ongoing basis.
Somebody would have to be like Housing Nantucket, or some entity would have to be the qualifier. Because, you know, even the people that are going 80, they're buying the affordable units, have to be qualified, or verify that they're year-round versus not year-round.
Well, that's no different than it is today. I mean, you know, we need the claim board, it's the enforcement authority.
Yeah, but if, if the restriction is released, we would have to have a, some sort of a document saying that I'm living there year-round, so I don't, if you were to sell it, I don't need the thing released, and I'm living there year-round. It, it's just, I'm not sure how mechanically to do this, but I don't think 1% frankly is enough for the benefit that they're getting. Because I didn't see anybody jumping up and down at the table to release the restrictions.
No, not at all.
Given that they've got the benefit of eight units. And if they're going to get out of it, then affordable housing, which is a hot-button issue right now, needs to be addressed more significantly than 1%. That's just where I'm sitting at the moment.
Well, yeah, I don't, I don't disagree with you, and I don't think we are gonna solve the affordable housing.
No, of course not.
No matter what we do, whether you release it or not, we're not gonna solve it with our 1% or 2% or 5%. Um, I think it's gonna take more than that, and I think, uh, you know, our proposal might help in that regard, but, to build some houses, but it's, I don't think it's gonna, we're not proposing to solve it.
No, it's a multi-pronged problem, but we're looking to expand our horizons, shall we say, on how we solve the problem, and how many different ways we solve the problem.
So, I've got a question for you at this point. Great, he says. So, if we were to do the 1%, and it keeps turning over and turning over, who's, who's the body that keeps certifying it and makes sure that all the reasons why we did this are being held intact and in place?
That's why it would be the Housing Nantucket.
That's, that's my question, is how's that going to happen? Because it won't be this board, I don't see.
Well, it's this board that has the enforcement authority right now. I mean, is, is the talent through the planning board. I mean, right, right now, it is restricted.
Yeah.
And if anyone, I guess that's my point, is that if anyone should be looking at this now, I'm not suggesting you want to get into looking at every unit, but it's this board now.
Except that you could...
That's why I'm here.
It could be deferred to a housing entity, a monitoring agent, which has been Housing Nantucket.
Yeah, which, you know, frankly, I don't think we care who monitors it. I mean, that, we're happy to have it, we're happy to grant the, the enforcement rights, I think, to anyone. However, I don't, I'm not sure if it's released, right?
Yeah.
For, for a certain person. In other words, uh, I'm selling it to someone, you know, from Connecticut. They are not gonna live there. They do not have peak seasonal housing employees, okay?
All right.
They want to buy it for $600,000. I say, okay, I would only otherwise get $570, $550 if it were a year-round resident, so it's worth it to me to come to you and ask for it to be released. I get it released, I pay the $6,000, the 1%, assuming it stays at 1%. And then, it is, it is unrestricted until it goes to be sold again. And then, the next time it has to be sold, it's, it's automatically restricted unless it gets released.
That...
So, in other words...
Go ahead, I'm sorry. I didn't finish what you were gonna say.
In other words, a, as an attorney, if I look at the documents, and my client is from New Canaan, and they're not gonna live there, I'm not gonna let them buy it unless the seller gets that restriction released.
I hear what you're saying, okay? Now, I will tell you from the very onset, when I sat on this board and we started looking at the, these, this particular project and projects of the ilk, you're right, there was about 100 units created out of it. And I think at the time, we, we were still serious. There was a housing study that had come out. We were serious about trying to make it happen, and I understand, just, just like some of the Nantucket Housing Inc. covenants have been waived, this, this too is something that may happen. But I'm gonna tell you at this point, if we're releasing the covenant with the concessions that were made, 1% is totally insufficient. Because even if all 100 units, just for sake of argument, convert out of this, you will probably create maybe one or two affordable housing units. That, in my mind, is not even close to an equal value. At a ratio of 1 to 50 or 1 to 100, I'm having a problem with that. So, respectfully, I'd say, if we're gonna do that, we need to be starting at 10%, okay? This problem is not readily resolvable at such a low value. I think the Affordable Housing Trust will, will probably tell you at this point, that's, that's where the pedal needs to meet the metal at this point. So, I think you probably need to rethink this a little further and start floating numbers like 10% out there, so that somehow we can make some housing happen elsewhere on the island. That would truly either be workplace or affordable.
I think what you're looking for, obviously, details have to be worked out. I think you're, what you're looking for, are we willing to go this direction to get this unit released? Is that where you want to, what kind of guidance you need? Or are we dead in the water, nobody's willing to accept a payment in lieu of restricting the unit to year-round? And they are not affordable units.
I know.
They're year-round, and not everybody who lives here year-round, you know, less than 100% or 80% of median certainly can live in them. But they're, they've got sewer, they've got water, they've got the, the shuttle. I mean, it meets all the criteria of what you would be looking for. And this, Andrew, this would be something that we should purchase the whole time. But, uh, so let's not kid ourselves that they're affordable, but are, do we have enough people in, willing to consider whatever percentage, provided it's acceptable, to release that unit? I'm willing to consider it, because I think there's a lot of stuff we can do for real affordable units 100% or less, and work with a Housing Nantucket and Habitat and places like that, and can assist them. With even $6,000 would help Habitat for Humanity immensely, given the amount of labor that has to go. And they're beginning to hire out because they don't have enough labor hours to actually finish the Habitat houses. So, I'm willing to consider it.
Well, that's, I mean, that's helpful direction, and, and if, I think if, if the rest of the board members feel the same way, don't get me wrong, I'll, I'll discuss it with them. I think you should know that I, that at 10%, it just probably doesn't work. Not because that's unreasonable, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Not because I don't completely understand what you're saying. Um, because, because these are not restricted to affordable units, I think the market takes care of them pretty well. Uh, in other words, I don't, in fact, I, I talked to a lot of real estate agents that I know to try to get an answer to this question. Hey, how much more is it worth if it's completely unrestricted? And I don't think it's worth that, that much more to be talking those numbers. That's, that's why. So, and, and so it might just be that it's not worth it to them, and that's, that's fine, too.
I'd be happy to consider 5%.
Well, have... Okay.
1% is just not working.
Understood, understood. That's, that's fine.
Yeah? Please?
I, um, see this as kind of a double-edged sword. If you released, um, 100 condominiums at 500, 600,000, and people are buying 400, 500, 600, 700,000 dollar homes for vacation homes, and they're taking them out of the year-round stock for seasonal use, which we've all read about recently. So, if you released 100, um, and you have people buying the lower-end stock for seasonal use, and you released 100 condos for seasonal use, you have a lot of housing that's taken out of workforce and seasonal employee. And me personally, I would be willing to consider 5 or 10% if I was involved in this further. But we have to remember that the stock at the lower end, 400, 500, 600,000, or if these units are 500, 600,000, it's being snapped up pretty fast right now in this hot market for vacation use. And that's been part of this debate and part of this problem. And I, I'm a little hesitant to, to support releasing 100 condominiums at 500, 600,000 dollars at 1%, but that's a significant amount of, of, um, of employee, peak, employee peak housing and year-round housing. And, and, you know, 400, 500, 600, $700,000 might be reachable by working professionals, um, things, people, people who are looking, you know, can't afford a million-dollar house, but they could maybe afford a 500, 600,000 dollar house. So, it's, it's tricky. And I think everybody's got a lot of interesting comments here, and this, this debate is raging right now. But, um, it's, it's a little nerve-wracking to, to, to have the vacation homes being snapped up in this range, and then have possibly a release of, of up to 100 of these units, if, if this is a precedent-setting move.
And it is tricky, and that's why we've been talking about it for so long.
And like I said, Mr. Bodat, sorry. And like I said, Mr. Bodat, make, make no mistake, there were significant concessions made at the time when we started, we started allowing this to happen.
Yeah, absolutely.
And people over a few, quite a few years' worth of time have had the benefit of that enjoyment underneath it. So, I'm gonna go back and say, let's, let's look at how much time has elapsed on the clock as well, too. Granted, maybe the real estate market is saying it won't bear that amount, but I, I think there are other factors that, that preclude wanting to keep this on a very low-scale thing. And like I said, I think people are, I think there's probably a few people, I dare say there's a few people out there waiting to see which way this, this pendulum's gonna swing. Because if, if it's 1%, I have no idea what we're gonna get, but I'm sure people will be intrigued. So, and like I said, that the, the, when everything comes down to the close of the day, where are we back to with what we first envisioned?
Mm-hmm.
And that was to create some housing that, that would actually do, do some justice for the workforce out there. So, I want it to stay true to that mission.
All right.
Anyone else on the board? Thank you. I appreciate you listening.
Yeah.
Anyone else on the board? Okay. Do you have anything, Andrew Leslie? I think he's gonna go back and parlay some more.
Okay, yeah. I'll, I'll talk to them about a bigger percentage.
You meet with your people and will...
I'll meet with yours.
You'll be back, and you can meet with our people.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you very much. I really do appreciate it.
I'll make a motion to continue the matter to October, I'm never gonna get that, October 15th.
Yeah. That sounds great. And do we hear a second? Motion's made in seconded discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Number 6889 Dolphin Court Subdivision, these are legal documents. Andrew Leslie, anything to comment?
Mr. Chairman, these were approved by the board many years ago, and some pages were omitted when they were recorded at the registry. So, we recommend that you vote to reapprove these so they can be recorded.
So moved.
And do I hear a second? Motion's now made in seconded for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously in a 4-0 vote. 6986, which is the Catchlot subdivision. Leslie, Andrew?
Yeah.
It's pretty straightforward, but anything else you want to add?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, on this one, um, there was a discrepancy in the numbers
Mm-hmm.
From what was in Ed Pesci's report, plus what was in the estimate provided by the applicant. Um, so, the staff report says that the 120% should be 42,630.
Yep.
That number's actually 55,200. And that number comes from a combination of the estimate that was provided by the applicant and a review of that estimate that was provided by Mr. Pesci.
Okay.
To clarify, how much are we asking from Erin?
55,200.
I would recommend that the board ask for 55,200.
What do you mean, is it doable?
Erin Carson?
Hi.
Hi, formerly known as Erin Lindberg, of course. Um, it is, I guess I'm just, I'm not really sure how that tallied up.
Okay.
Leslie, go ahead.
So, in Ed Pesci's report dated September 9th, he did a review of the items that were provided, I think, by Erin, which was, this page is not dated, it lists, um, some punch list items and additional costs. So, Mr. Pesci did not review the additional costs, he only reviewed the costs related to the subdivision infrastructure improvements. He included a total of 27,500 to her 24,500, basically. And then, he also added $7,500 for driveway aprons, if required by the board, and those were required by the board in the original decision. So, that's an additional 7,500. And then, we added to that her additional costs, which were the legal costs. That's 11,000. So, that totals $46,000 times 120% is 55,200.
Do you see where she got it?
Yeah, I, I don't have, that, I trust the math is right.
Do you want, do you want to come down and look at it?
Sure.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question while we're doing this?
What?
Were we splitting this into two pieces? Were we splitting this into two pieces?
Sorry. There was going to be one payment made for the legal costs
Yep.
and one payment made for the infrastructure costs. So we can separate that out, but the total amount was the 55,200.
That's what we want right now?
Yes.
Yes. Do you want to come down?
I, I will. I just want to say, we initially thought that, we wanted to separate them into two categories because we need the participation of a lot of the homeowners.
Right.
And it turns out we don't. We only need the participation of, who would be our butter? And he's agreed.
Oh.
So we'd rather just kind of get it done in one full swoop and just put up all the money.
And just get it done?
Just get it done.
Cool.
So, but I'll come in.
Yeah, please. Go right ahead.
175. So I'm sure 11.
Moral support.
So I don't really, I mean, he, so he's...
Good man.
... taking into account factors that might affect... Is that right? Um, well, we could remove that, yes. Let's write that on there, whatever I can get. So 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 8, 9, 10, so it's 52,700. And that's doable, aren't?
It is. I mean, there are some items in there, like, you know, the legal estimate was 4,000, you know, attorney pressure has said it might be less than that, you know, I mean, they're, of course. I did speak to Mr. Pesci about the extra $2,500 of retainer to be put in his sort of inspection account. He said it might be less than that at the end of the day. But, you know, we know what, that it might cost as much, and that's what we're prepared to, to put up.
Okay.
So, and what we're looking for really is for me to walk in tomorrow and see Leslie with a check.
There you go.
And to literally get a Form J in exchange.
Great.
Right. So would be appropriate a motion to accept...
To release the Form J
Yep.
and accept a performance security in the amount of 52,700 dollars to be held in an interest-bearing segregated account until a final sign-off is provided by Pesci Engineering and until the legal work is completed.
So moved. You want, do you have something?
I'm just curious, is it sort of released all at once, or is it a rolling release? If I get some things done in the next month, I'm just curious.
The board can vote to reduce that number incrementally as things are checked off the list.
Okay.
So that motion is now made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You did a good job, John.
7033, Blackfish Lane subdivision, on Burnell Street. This is a lot release, Form J.
Motion to approve.
And second, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. 7438 Goose Cove subdivision, 5 Cambridge Street, they're asking for a two-year extension.
So moved.
Yep, second.
Discussion.
It's not in there. It's just an extension.
It's just an extension. They're doing good now.
So the motion is made and seconded, discussion on the issue. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. 7786 Vine Cliff Lane subdivision, again, this is a Form J.
So move to endorse or release? Where am I going? Release the lot?
Second.
Release the hounds.
Yep. Motion is now made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. 7823 White Hart Lane, this is off of Boulevard, Form J, lot release again.
So moved.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You aye?
Those opposed.
Everybody wake up there.
That's okay, those opposed, thank you. That's a four-to-o vote. 7845, which is David WB, I'm sorry, Arthur, is it Wills?
Willsey.
Willsey, sorry. On 33 New Street. This is a discussion regarding the A and R. Leslie, Andrew, do you want to start the conversation?
Well, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gay, Attorney Joe Gay submitted the letter. He's not here to discuss it with the board, so we would recommend that you not discuss this tonight unless Mr. Reed wants to address it.
Mr. Reed, good evening.
Yeah, Mr. Gay submitted a letter a while back, and I submitted a letter in response there, too. First of all, I think that this is simply not a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the planning board to determine. Mr. Gay, in his most recent letter, indicated that he had commenced an action in the land court, which I haven't seen yet. We were actually about to file an action in the land court. I think that's the appropriate place to have this resolved.
Mm-hmm. I would agree.
So what do we do here?
Well, I think...
Take no action?
Take no action.
I'll make a motion to take no action at this, at this time, or just take no action, period?
Take no action, period.
Reed is the town subject to legal laws because we endorsed it. If they file, if they like one...
I'm not aware of any suit against the town.
No, but because we endorsed it.
Well, the town sold the land to them, too, so...
Right.
The town is going to be...
Yeah, so, liable.
Potentially involved, no matter what.
Mm-hmm. So that's my motion to take no action on this matter at this time, right now.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is now made and seconded for discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it unanimously. 4-14 Stop &amp; Shop, the status update and sign-off on the CO. Was there anyone here for this?
Yes.
They were. Sarah.
Sarah.
Stop &amp; Shop.
I didn't realize you wanted me to act here.
Leslie knows, Leslie knows what's going on because it's coming to the HDC tomorrow night for the same thing.
Hang on for a second.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Ed Pesci has performed a final review of the Stop &amp; Shop project. He has signed off on all of it. And they do need to address some landscaping things in the spring that are minor in nature because of weather.
Right.
And we have no doubt that they will take care of that. So we would recommend that the, that you authorize us to sign off on the final certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
I thought I saw in the plans that there were picnic tables where the benches are on the Pleasant Street side. Has that been deleted, or is that not going to happen? In the cafe, outdoor cafe area?
That was gone.
I'm just curious. Gone?
Yeah, gone.
Thank you.
The HDC was asked to extend the deadline for the TCO. That's the letter we have going to the HDC tomorrow night. So we're not being asked to do a final... We're being asked to extend the deadline because our deadline was September 1st, was it?
Well, that's okay, that doesn't have to vary.
So I, but we're all operating under the same TCO at the moment. How is this, should the HDC do something other than that?
There was a temporary certificate of occupancy issued by the building commissioner. It was extended. It's been, I think, extended again. And they need a final sign-off from both the planning board and the HDC in order to get the final certificate of occupancy.
Well, then...
So I don't know what outstanding issues the HDC may have, but the planning board doesn't have any, and we're recommending that you authorize us to sign off.
Well, I want us to go to do the same thing because that's what I'm confused by. We're different.
We need, I think we need the extension and the final sign-off.
From...
From HDC.
So you need an extension from us?
Yes, because the, the extension has expired.
Because these have been running together.
The, the TCO is, is just about to expire, so we need to extend it.
Right. And we're extending it to October 30th, so...
And then we need the final sign-off so that between now and when it expires, we can...
Okay, so we can keep going with what we're doing and vote to do the final through the planning board. It's just that we have to, we have to extend ours, as opposed, we've been running them together as far as under the TCO, the planning board and the HDC have been the same deadlines for extensions?
I don't think so, but Andrew?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I, from what Leslie said, she's right. The technical, they've met the technical requirements to Mr. Pesci's satisfaction.
Correct.
But I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't go completely so far to say that they're in full compliance. I have, at least on page 227 of your packet, you'll see that we have had some discussions. We haven't concluded anything about, number one, the operation of the loading area, because there have been some issues with that. There was some issues about the condition that that is kept in, that we're at least having some discussions on. And there was an issue, at least with a refrigerated truck that was running overnight, that, you know, clearly is something that is not allowed or anticipated as part of that program. That disturbed people, and that's really, you know, that's not the representation that was made before the board. So the representation, I think, as everyone remembers, is that that area was to be kept, you know, at a high level of quality and, and not full of bread racks and other things. So I think they've made an effort to clean that up, and it was the first season, so, you know, that's, got to try it out, see what happens. But I think that, that is an issue that we need a, maybe a little bit more time to get some feedback on.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Should you, we're going to October 30th, that Friday. They asked us for even earlier, and I said, no, there's still issues, we got to go to October 30th. Should we continue the planning board to October 30th, or are we just going to have different deadlines?
I think probably at least to our, through our October meeting, so we...
All right, so October 30th?
Have a chance to, I mean, if you, if the board shares at least those particular concerns.
They're certainly aware of it. The only thing I want to bring up, and I'm not sure it's necessarily within the scope of, of what, it can come before this board, but it really has been an observation, having been over there. Indirectly, the operation, the internal operations, I think, are affecting traffic and, and in the area. And how I'm drawing to that conclusion is, it seems like during the daytime, there's a lot of stocking of the shelves, and the aisles are really kind of hard for people to navigate through with the level of stocking that's going on. Consequently, I think it's tying people up in the store a little bit longer than necessary. So especially during the summer, when it's busy, people don't have the ability to get through the store at a better time rate than usual. So unfortunately, what's happening is people are spending longer in the store than necessary just to navigate through the system. And I don't, it's like I said, I'm not clear if it's within the purview of this board, but indirectly, I, I'd argue that it is affecting the, the traffic turnover that's happening out there. So I just want to kind of throw that out as something that I do think...
All right.
And this is the first year, this is really the first, trust me, it, I know April, May, everything's just slamming together for you guys at Stop &amp; Shop, and then all of a sudden, summer's upon us, and, you know, you're all trying to make sense of working within a new environment.
Right. There certainly have been kinks to work out, and if not stocking during, if stocking during the day is an issue, I will discuss that with them and let, let them know that operations is aware of it.
Big time, big time.
Yeah, just, just somehow to, to kind of get that taken care of. But I, I have to agree with Andrew as well, too. One thing I noticed was that, here we go again, just in terms of, of pattern and flow...
Right. And we clearly said we would have a clean and neat operation. The running of the refrigerated truck 24/7 was not acceptable, and I, I don't know what else to say about that.
I got, I got to chime in there. The reason why it's not acceptable, it isn't acceptable.
Well, no.
But the reason why that's happening is because they don't have enough storage space. So as it was in the other store, they didn't build enough storage space because they didn't get the fire department property in time. There's no storage space for produce, and there's no storage space for dairy. I know, because my son's father is the produce manager.
You know a lot more about it than I do.
I know a lot more than a lot of people do. More than I ever wanted to know, frankly. Difference between apples, don't want to know. But he, there's no storage space in the back, so they, they had problems keeping the shelves as anybody went in those two sections. No, all summer long, they were half-empty, if not empty and completely in some sections, because they don't have enough to keep in the back in order to cycle through to the floor. So what they were doing all summer on high times, especially begin, end of July and beginning of August, was having to leave the stuff on the truck, and instead of the truck sitting down at the steamship authority, running, which is what they would do, or on the other side, running until it could get over here, the trucks were coming over, sitting in the bay, running, so they could get stuff off and stock those shelves. And that was a nightmare all summer, and both of those departments are having a terrible time right now. But that's why those trucks were running. They weren't running because they felt like running. They have a real logistical problem in those two sections, which are on that end of the building. So until they were able to get more storage space or figure out another way of dealing with it, that's what happened. To everybody's detriment, that's why that was happening. But right now, there's no solution to it because they can't bang out the back because the selectmen have not put that property up for RFP yet. After 10 years of telling us they were, it's still not up for RFP at the moment. They've told us it was going to happen year after year after year, and that's the problem. It's still not on the market for somebody to make a bid on it to get more space. So it's a, it's a logistical nightmare in there at the moment, and I don't know how to solve it. The, clearly the trucks can't run all night, maybe they have to leave them down at the boat instead. But that's not going to work too well either, because that's packed. So there are a lot of things going on, a lot of moving parts. I don't, I don't know what else to say about it. But I'm back to the original reason why we're here. Do we need to just give them an extension and not sign off on it at the moment until we work some of this stuff out? Is that where we are at the moment?
My recommendation, Mr. Chairman, would be...
Yes, please.
Yes, that we, I think we need a little more information on how they're going to meet that condition of the special permit.
Okay.
To the board's satisfaction. Again, I'm assuming that you agree with me on that particular point. But I, I remember that quite clearly during the public hearing, and that was my discussion with them. And, and they have been responsive to that. They, I'm not saying they haven't.
Right.
I just don't have a specific plan of action yet, and, you know, hopefully between now and the October meeting, we can have that discussion. And it's, it's not, for them not trying, they've, our schedules just have not coincided to go over some of the specific details.
Yeah.
But there is, there's some other minor-type issues that I've brought up with them. You know, some of the cart storage and other things that I think
Screening.
Need particular attention, especially that, you know, the, what's happening on the abutting streets.
Yeah.
And, and I...
Parking.
Hold on.
And I don't want things to get sort of established without being addressed.
Okay. I think that, that seems fair. Go ahead, Di, what were you going to say there?
Well, I think just in the, the length of time it is taking people in the store, which makes the parking space fuller, and that parking on Pleasant Street is, they've had so many customers that you say not to restock in the daytime, they have to restock, otherwise the shelves are empty because of the number of people that are buying. And I think one of the other things is that a lot of people don't know where the stuff is that they want, so they have to go look for it, and it's just taking twice as long to, to shop as it did before. I'm always astounded by the number of cars in that parking lot. You know, that it looks like they're shipping people in from the other side to, to come here and buy. But I think the stocking, the restocking in the daytime is a problem, but I've talked to a couple people who I know who do that, and they say it has, the stuff is going so fast that it has to be restocked, or otherwise it isn't there. So, the, I don't know that the parking on Pleasant Street is any help. Because cars aren't there for 15 minutes, which I guess was the proposal that it was going to be. But they're there longer, and they're parking in your parking space, too, right?
Oh, it's, it's not my parking space, first of all. But I understand, I do understand that when they do, you know, I think there's a newness to it that we need to be a little forgiving about.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Just like with any new business that expands to a certain extent, you need to kind of let them work through what has to happen.
Yes.
It's perfectly imperfect initially. And I think, as Andrew has said, they're trying to step up to the plate and make the appropriate adjustments to do it. And I think we do need to give them a little bit of time. I don't think you can afford to be critical upfront, right now, without giving them some more time to address the situation. So I think that's part of what we're endeavoring to do here again tonight. This is their first operational season with the facility in its, in its new fashion.
I think they tried very hard, don't you?
I think that, to their credit, I will say, I think they've, they've done a tremendously good job.
Miracle workers, in my opinion.
I really do. And I think, you know, it's just, there's some more fine tuning that we need to do. And this is the discussion we're having. So I, I don't want it to sound critical, but we do need to have the discussion.
No, no, I totally understand.
Plus, there's landscaping stuff, I believe, between both entities. There's landscaping things that have to be done, and we've known that for a while.
So, not to belabor the point any further unless there's something additional that I hear coming from this board, but-
I'll make a motion to give them an extension to October 30th.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
And to continue this discussion to-
To October 15th?
Whatever they need.
Did I get it?
Second.
So the motion is now made in second. I think you hear us willing to work with you.
I do.
Yes.
So that's extension to the 30th.
And discussion to the 15th.
15th. And I think we can iron out a lot of our issues by that term, sure. It's great.
Thank you.
No problem. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have the unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Yeah, 1315, which is 19 Amelia Drive, Joseph Manning and Associates.
For the record, Rhoda Weinman. We have two modifications that we'd like to ask for in the decision. The board initially approved two three-bedroom apartments, and we want to reduce that to two, two-bedroom apartments. And we were told we had to come back here for that because the building commissioner and the zoning enforcement officer wanted it consistent, so-
Is it up two, or just said three, or three?
Correct. And what I was told is they would require the parking for three bedrooms unless we changed it. So, we'd like to ask for that modification.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
I have a second one.
What's, that was the second one?
The second one is, we requested approximately 2,000 square feet for ground cover. And the way this decision was written, it's, they're saying here, construct a mixed-use 2,000-square-foot building. And it's not a 2,000-square-foot building, it's a 5,000-square-foot building. So, apparently it was a typo because the second page has it correctly for the first floor, 2,000 square feet.
I'll make that motion to correct all that stuff.
And lastly, um-
You got a third one?
Well, it's not a modific, well, let me just go through this.
Yeah, please.
The site plan that you have has a total of 2,540 square feet on the ground cover. And the reason that that has changed is because of the two, there were two stairwells. So, the two stairwells for the first floor, it's, I'm sorry, for the first floor is 2,064. And we needed the two stairwells to get to the second floor. So the total, that would just change the ground cover to 2,540.
I'll make a motion to fix and clarify everything.
Do you have the numbers, okay?
You give them to staff.
Okay.
Leslie, Andrew, you also have them.
Leslie, 2,540 on the total. And the two-bedroom change from three-bedroom.
So that motion is now made and seconded. Good. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Those opposed, thank you. All right, so-
Demick is gone.
That's correct. Yep. So that's going to bring us to 7823, which is White Elephant Village on C Street. Is there anyone, Mr. Bodett, you coming on down? Okay, great.
No, we have some dialing, but we're hearing. Keep going to the call center.
You know Linda's missing Monday Night Football.
Great.
Let's get out of here.
You guys all set?
Okay.
Okay. All right, so 78, yeah, I'm sorry, gentlemen.
A little extra height would be better for everything. Little extra height would be better for everything.
Mr. Bodett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Rick Bodett for the applicant Nantucket Island Resorts LLC. Here tonight with Brian McCarthy from RJ O'Connell, Ricardo Dumont from Dumont Janks, and I think some of you know Scott Kelly from Nantucket Island Resorts.
Can you email Catherine everybody's names and who they are at some point tomorrow?
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. Go ahead.
We're here tonight to show you a second iteration of a preliminary plan that we filed. It's a freeze plan that was filed in April. We were before you at the April meeting, just to refresh your recollection, and that's, the previous plan is before you right here. Nat and Linda were not present at that meeting. This, this prior plan showed a through one-way street from South Beach to Easton. That freezes the zoning in the LC zoning district. The town meeting this year changed it to CNROH. This, this particular plan, unlike the White Elephant Plan that we filed last year, is proposed to be actually developed. It's not just a freeze plan, just so everyone knows. Some of the concerns that the board mentioned on the last iteration were, what were the commercial uses going to be specifically, I think, Mr. Chairman, that was one of your, one of your concerns. Their concern, I think, Mr. Chairman, you had were, was, how many curb cuts were going to be on C Street, which is a, not, well, not a well-traveled street. So what we've done since then is we've met with staff, I've met a couple of times, Ricardo and Scott and I met with Leslie and Andrew, to show, to show them and to present you with the latest iteration, which is the plan for the- This is a freeze and limited commercial.
Okay, this allows dwellings and use commercial?
Yep. Yeah. Second dwellings are allowed, garage apartments are not allowed, I believe. So, so first off, to, to answer one of Mr. Rector's concerns, none of the, these are all supposed to be residential lots. They're not proposed to have any commercial uses, with the exception of the corner, corner lot on C Street and South Beach, which currently houses a real estate office, as proposed to remain a real estate office for the time being. This particular plan, the general concept of which is to create 12 buildable home lots with a, a one-way street starting at South Beach Street, ending in a cul-de-sac in the parking lot of the hotel residences. What we have before you is a 20-foot wide road shown as a traveled surface with one We'd like the board's direction on whether that could be even more narrow, given that it's a one-way street. And given that the, the other general concept here that you'll see, and let me just point this out, is that all of the lots are to be accessed with driveway easements through the back of the lots. These five lots take their frontage off of this proposed roadway. These three lots take their frontage off the proposed roadway. These four take their frontage off of C Street. All of the lots are to be accessed through that. So there's no curb cuts on C Street. And these lots would be, would be accessed this way, or through the road. These nine lots would be accessed through the driveway easement. The other thing to mention is that, obviously, and I mentioned this the last time we were here, we'll have to come back to the board to amend the special permit that exists on this entire site. We'll need, we'll need to eliminate the existence of a special permit on any of these lots, number one. Number two, we'll, we'll have to file the definitive plan for all of these lots. And we plan to do that simultaneously. We plan to do that also within the next couple of months. I think as an ancillary matter, we will have to probably file for a special permit for that corner lot that has the real estate office, as a separate matter. But again, I think, you know, we're, we're assuming that the board would like to see that all at once, so that all the, all the issues can, can be addressed at once. Obviously, we'll come in with an amendment at the same time we come in with this definitive So, if you have any questions, I can answer them. Everyone here with me can answer them as well.
Andrew, with the change in the zoning bylaw, does he need to come in for a special permit for that corner real estate, once it's separated from everything else? Or just separated out of the MCD, as part of the MCD?
Just separate it out.
Yeah. It doesn't need a whole special permit by itself anymore, because we changed the parking requirements downtown.
Hmm.
This is under LC.
It's going to be in LC.
If you're, it's not in, commercial downtown, the corner, no. It's on the edge, right?
Yeah, it's in LC. I think the use of office requires a special permit. I mean, it already has one.
If they're freezing it in LC.
It's just kind of a weird anomaly that-
Yeah, if you're staying under LC, okay. Unlike the plan for the other property, which I have grave concerns with, this one is set up pretty much like the townhouses when they built the townhouses, long after the original Harbor House was built. So I think the way it's set up is, at 5,000-square-foot lots, these lots are actually bigger than a lot of the lots downtown, which don't meet the 5,000 minimum lot size at all. And they all have more than 50% ground cover. So, I think with the way you've got this set up is, is acceptable, because it's very much reminiscent of the things before you tore them down. I think 20-foot wide is, as a paved way, is way too wide for an in-town street.
One-way.
Yeah, one-way on top of it. I don't frankly care if it's one-way or two-way, but I think it needs to be a lot narrower and a lot softer. Because right now, it looks like you actually have a runway where you could take off going up the hill. Because all the trees are gone, the buildings are gone, it's very open. So it looks a little bizarre now, and I don't want it to continue to be that wide. But I, for me, I think this is a great plan. And right now, on C Street, you have the big open parking area. There's a couple of curb cuts involved with Harbor, with Harbor House, let alone where you used to come out. So, if you had one or two curb cuts for the two that are farther up C Street, I don't mind if you have curb cuts off of C Street. So I don't know what the big deal is there. There've been curb cuts off of C Street since the Harbor House was built.
Especially if it's all-
And then when they added the other buildings. So, coming in off of the backside, I don't know. You know, it's going to have to happen over at the other one, but not necessarily at this one. So I don't, I don't necessarily have the same problem with coming off of C Street with driveways, because the people that've got parking on Sea and Ash and North Water Street and all the rest of them, there's a bunch of driveways in a row. So that would be out of context to have driveways, at least on two of them. The ones further away from the corner, perhaps. So I'm not really neurotic about that, but I think it's a fine plan, or preliminary plan. Especially if they're going to residential, instead of having multiple commercials in there, which would really be heavy on that site. So I, I think you're going in a great direction here, frankly. And you're keeping the rest of the Harbor House, and you're keeping the, the access, and you're keeping the connection to the Mad Hatter lot, so, works for me.
Thanks, Linda. It's pretty much all my idea.
It took us a long, just so you know, it took us a really long time at the HDC to approve the buildings that were supposed to go here. And now you're not doing them.
Sorry. We'll give you more work to do. 12, 12 new buildings.
Yay. They're not going to get too crazy with the designs, because downtown is what it is.
Anyone else?
Just narrowing up that entrance. Picks us up a couple more on-street parking spaces, as Andrew just indicated. Rick?
Right.
So that's good. You've already done all the improvements on Beach Street, South Beach, so.
I don't know what staff would think about cleaning up C Street at all.
I don't really know what, I mean, I don't care about the driveway things, either way. I mean, having it, having none certainly changes the street and makes it potentially something to improve. You know what I mean? It's kind of a mess. It's been that way for years, down there, you know? Can only get better there, exactly. So, this is good. I mean, I think it's great. It's taken a long time to get here, but it's good. Rick, some good news for you lately. It's not hard to come by.
I know, it's rare.
You've got bad luck in here lately, so this is good.
Well, you know, one of the other things we, we'd like a little bit of direction on, if, if you-
Better than Millies.
-give it to us. Say that again?
Better than Millies.
All right, all right, all right. Let's, 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 let's not.
It is, is C Street, the, you might remember, some of you might remember, some of you might not, but the original approval required a brick sidewalk on C Street.
It did?
That, just that run.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so I don't know if that's something, you know, whether, I think whether, Andrew's nodding.
Whatever Andrew suggests.
That's something you would like to see?
Yeah.
Have to see?
I, I would think it's definite. It, it will help, I mean, it's the kind of cleanup that that needs, and, I mean, that, that street has got a lot of pedestrian activity, and I think it would help the look of your project, and it would help the street, so, anyway.
Because you know, there's no curbing on either side of the street.
Right. I mean, I think it's going to look better, no matter what we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, it can't get any worse.
Yeah.
On that side of the street.
And the sidewalk, if, even if we put one in, it, it will just go to nowhere.
Low curve.
Just so you know.
Eventually, we can, you know, sidewalks to nowhere eventually get hooked up. So, we got to start somewhere, so.
That's right. Just like bike paths to nowhere get hooked up eventually.
I, I do, I would say, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I, I agree with reducing the width of that road, of the, the one-way road, and we, we talked about that. I think, you know, in, the curbing should probably be low.
Low.
Because there could be, at least where people do pull over, if there's no, you know, at least temporarily in front of those houses, you may get, you know, some people that want to pull off for a minute, run in and whatever. So it can't be so narrow that it's just going to block, you know, you're never going to be able to pull over to the curb.
Right.
So maybe at least some lower, you know, have a smaller reveal on the curb through there, so at least a car could pull over for a minute, you know, double park for a minute or something.
As I say, I don't mind driveways over there, because every house in some of these little roads that are half the size of the lot-
Yep.
-have driveways. And that's in character with all the little in-town streets.
Well, right, if they're doing that, but I, it seemed to me the design intent was to focus on the back, access from the back, wasn't it?
Yeah.
And so that the streetscape itself would be just the buildings and, and gardens and fences or whatever, which I think is a great idea.
Right, and see, you'd, you'd have the front facade of your buildings-
Right.
-without any driveways.
Right. And, and I'm guessing you don't want any long-term parking along that street. You don't want on-street parking.
On C Street?
On, no, on your-
Oh, sorry.
On your entrance street.
No, absolutely no.
But, but I think to make it too narrow, so a car could, you know, could at least pull over, and again, I think you could do it with a smaller curb.
16, maybe?
Maybe 16.
Trees.
Trees?
Oh, yeah.
With the curb.
Yeah, trees.
16 with at least a flush-type curb.
And a, and a sidewalk?
Oh, a tree type.
With the sidewalk on one side, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe even if the sidewalk were, had the lower curb, you know, where cars pull up a little bit on the sidewalk, again, temporarily, that's what you're looking at, right?
Well, do we want on-street parking on this thing?
That's what I was just going to ask.
I don't think they do.
I mean, I think we-
I think they do on one side.
-have to widen it, otherwise.
Okay.
I would think long-term on-street parking kind of takes away the design that we talked about, right? So. So...
So, Mr. McGlaughlin, I thank you. This looks a heck of a lot better. It really does. And I appreciate some of the changes. Andrew's right. I think getting a brick sidewalk on C Street and closing up any more curb cuts on there will lend itself toward making the neighborhood a lot nicer. And I think it'll give us a genesis through, if not the planning board, maybe the planning commission, to maybe look at the rest of the street as well, too, and do something to kind of spruce that up as well. So that's great. The other thing I like, too, is that with the internal roadways that you have now, the internal driveways, it's great because on C Street, there'll be a visual, a little bit of a visual landscape that you'll create as well, too. Internally, with your proposed way, again, putting all that parking in between the buildings, I think will give it a much nicer appeal. It'll remind me of the old cottages that used to be down in that area. So I really do appreciate the fact you took that extra step to take and relocate where you're putting parking either in-between or in-back of the buildings. I think it'll really look nice. I would hate to see long-term parking occurring on the proposed way because I think it will detract from the look of the neighborhood. Short, you know, short little 15-minute interval, no one's going to care. But to see cars lined up there overnight at times, I, it just, I don't think it'll give the same visual look. I think you're, I see you shooting for something that's going to look really nice, a little bit high-end, and I think you need to keep running with that concept. So I would, I for one would discourage you, but I think a 16-foot roadway in there will probably suffice to meet those needs very nicely. Linda, and I'm sure from an architectural standpoint, with landscaping and stuff, it will really come together nicely. I just have a good feel for that.
Yeah, we think so, too. And I think the idea of that roadway and the reason for the reduced width, I think, is to encourage more of a pedestrian feel there. And I think parking on it...
Yeah, and Andrew's absolutely right. Long South Beach Street, along even C Street, strangely enough, that always boggles my mind. But it's, a lot of people use that year-round. One thing I find is that, what is it, like along North Water Street and stuff, people will park their cars there once the parking ban lifts, so they can go, they can leave their car there overnight and go to the steamship authority and come back. Gee, what street do they use to cut across?
Don't know anything about that.
Don't know anything, neither do I. I have, I've just heard it rumored at this point. But here you go again. I think it, really, overall, I think this is far superior to where we're heading.
Do we need to vote to endorse this?
I think, well, hang on, hang on for a minute.
No.
Hang on for a minute. We do, we do need to check in with them. Is there anyone else on the board who wants to comment on this? No. Do you feel like you've got adequate guidance by us so far?
I think so. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I think there is an appropriate motion for this, which is to...
Authorize the chair to sign a letter of approval.
So moved.
Motion's made in second for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. So that's going to bring us into sketch plans. Dana Troxel, you have a recommendation from staff here at this point, is just, they want to remove this...
So moved.
That's fine.
So moved to remove.
Second?
Oh, yeah.
You second?
Second, sorry.
Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously.
Motion to allow the withdrawal of the Yodati.
All right, so let me...
Without prejudice.
Right, let me be a little clear about this. We've actually already done this. But what you're going to do tonight is reaffirm the vote.
So moved.
Okay, so we're reaffirming the vote.
Yep.
And now?
Yep.
Was it a second that I hear from you?
Yeah, second.
Okay, so the motion's made in second to reaffirm that vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. Brings us to Stephen Waterhouse on 20 Sparks Ave. Mr. King, Mr. Reed, good evening.
Good evening.
How are you, gents?
Good.
Good.
Here to represent the Waterhouses for possible subdivision. I don't have actually the plan.
I believe you have the plan.
Yeah, as soon as it is.
I mean, obviously, this is just a preliminary sketch of what we would be presenting. And I don't know. I have trouble with these things.
Go ahead.
In any event, it's a three-lot plan on Sparks Avenue. What we would be doing would be bringing in an interior roadway, what have we got, 30 feet wide?
Yeah.
With a, yeah, 30 feet wide with a turnaround at the end. It seemed to us that that would adequately provide for the moderate amount of activity that would be on the site.
On that side, anyone?
I don't mind the three-lot subdivision. I think that's great for them. And it's a, it's a, you know, that property's right in the middle of all the commercial stuff going on. But I don't like the way this is subdivided. I don't know what to do about this, but it, I don't like cul-de-sacs anyway.
True.
I know they're trying to come in the driveway that they already have, but this is, it's 110 feet long and 30 feet wide. No. And my question is, Teddy, why can't you run the interior roadway along one of the lot lines and subdivide it this way? So it just runs down, and I'm not going for 30-foot wide. It may be not there. But, you know, can you understand what I'm saying? You run the road down here and, you know, do this and give them frontage, and then give them frontage and give them frontage because one of the buildings is in the way anyway. I guess the back building's going to have to move or something? It would just have to go over here. It would just pick up and go over there. Or run the road on this side, which is where the commercial side is, you know, where the downy flag is. Run the road along the plate, the piece in-between the two, and have square or lot, so you've got more lot space, if that's possible. And have the frontage off the interior road running down the lot line, and then, you know, run the hammerhead or whatever to get the frontage for Steve's lot in the back. And the house has to move anyway, so it might as well move five more feet. But I'm not in favor of this. I'm in favor of giving him more square lots and get as much usable space because this is really limiting them here. So that's why I'm having trouble with it. Not the fact that there's three lots. I think that's great, but just reconfigure this thing.
Right. Yeah. Andrew, go ahead.
I would agree with what Linda said. I mean, I think that the way this is set up, the lots are, you know, roughly 33 feet wide, running lengthwise, which is...
And you've got frontage setbacks and everything else?
Yeah, I think if this were moved adjacent to the Downy Flag property, there might be an opportunity to coordinate the entrances somehow. I think that the board, you know, if it were willing to consider a reduced-width road to more like 20, as opposed to...
How about 18?
30.
Well, they got two-way traffic.
All right, let me...
We have a right-of-way, and then we have a traveled way.
Right.
So a 20-foot...
Like we did up in the...
Right-of-way with a smaller, you know, 18-foot within it. There still should be some room for curbs and whatever on the side. But I don't, I think 20 feet would be more, again, as the right-of-way, not the traveled surface. The interior could be, could be smaller. But I do think it should be, I think it would be more beneficial against the Downy Flag property on that particular side. Again, if you look at the other, where the Cumberland Farms is, that's against the other property. The idea would try to be to reduce the curb cuts in the long term, not add a bunch more. So I mean, if it were moved over there, the idea would, that all access should come off the road, not directly out onto the street, and that maybe you would modify the, not have a round circular, you know, curb cut, but maybe a square or...
Half a hammerhead or something.
Square, you could, you can reduce to 20 feet frontage for commercial lots. Not everybody does it, but it could be done.
And you'd get square or lots, and you'd have a lot more lot to deal with, and only one setback instead of this crazy long thing, which really limits what you can build there.
And for turnaround, perhaps just have a short half hammerhead.
Yeah.
And then people's driveways.
Yeah, and then people's driveways.
I, there's no reason why that wouldn't, wouldn't work just as well as far as we're concerned.
It would help them out much better because the lots would be much better shaped for you guys.
Board members, do you have anything else?
I just have a few quick questions for you. Is this restricted to residential only on those three lots, or is it...
No.
Residential and/or commercial?
Commercial.
I think that in that location, commercial would be anticipated.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
All right, so it's making me want to rethink the 18-foot.
No, he said 20.
No, 20-foot layout.
And if they can get the dual entrance.
All right, but let me ask you a question. Is it, do you envision maximizing it to two dwellings per lot then, or... I'm just trying to get a sense of what I'm looking at when you do this.
I don't think we've progressed to the point where we've determined exactly what the, what the uses would be.
Because I do think moving the roadway, I think you hear agreement with the board on moving that roadway is critical, but I think the size of the roadway, that you're going to do, the, you know, whether we're going to turn all three into commercial at this point, because in that area, I mean, there's a wealth of certain commercial things that can happen. I think I'd want to reserve that right to be a little more critical about how that's all going to play itself out. Because all of a sudden, we're now starting to think about parking and other things that will have to happen in that area. How is it going to affect everything else? Might be. But we don't see...
Plenty of ways to go here.
Right.
Right.
But I just want to make sure that that door's opened somewhat, that's all. It's my only concern.
Somebody may buy two of them. I mean, that's what's happening out of the office, fit, and buying, everybody's buying two of them at a time.
Yeah. No, I understand. That possibility is there, but you have to, I think you have to at least run with the idea that somehow they're thinking three lots is a good thing. And I think as a board, you need to be thinking three commercial lots happening in that area. And the thing is that since it's still, it's still RC2, right, Andrew?
It's RC.
RC.
It's RC. But that still opens up a number of potentials about what type of commercial uses can be happening. And so I think we need to be a little cognizant of that one as well, too.
Right, although obviously, if you're dealing with lots of this size, the extent of commercial use on it is going to be pretty limited.
About the parking requirement.
By the parking, by parking requirements and by practicality.
Yep. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, it's...
Please.
This is an area that we are considering for the rezoning to commercial Mid Island, which has essentially the same 5,000 square feet...
Yep.
50 feet of frontage requirement.
Right now, it's only 40 feet.
RC, is it 40 or...
40.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
So this works for them right now.
Well, I think that, remember, there's the provision that allows you to reduce the frontage to 20 feet in commercial, which wouldn't change no matter what the district is. So, and there, you know, again, it can serve as a freeze plan, and that's fine, but I think that the commercial Mid Island might offer some other opportunities that, that actually a larger lot benefits from.
Right, well, we'll obviously look at that as we go along.
Right.
But I think we have, at this point, good input as to what the board would be looking for. And on the basis of that, we might come back with a revised sketch plan or with a pre-plan.
Do you want to go on this?
No.
No.
Does that help?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
All right, so on the ZBA ones that you see listed here at this point, 2514 through 2715?
2515.
Well, this is just to reaffirm a vote?
Yes.
That's all it is. It's not on 2415 through 2715, right? The only thing that's being asked at this point is we reaffirm the vote. Catherine, why was 6714 not?
Oh, I think that was continued, too, from the...
No, that's been continued because we'll keep waiting for it.
Okay, all right.
It was continued from the previous.
Got it, all right. I just was trying to figure that, I'm sorry.
When were you reaffirming, what happened?
Plus than 40 hours.
48 hours. Who was it?
Oh, okay. Because I just wanted to know what they were doing at the need-a-bar incentive. They were getting what they're doing.
Those applications received a positive recommendation from the planning board, and they were positively acted on by the board.
Oh, yeah, I got it, I got it.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to reaffirm the previous recommendation.
Okay, do I hear a second? Second, motions made in second for discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have unanimously. All right, see ya. Miss...
I know.
Mr. McGlaughlin's leaving at this point. So preliminary zoning articles, guys, believe it or not.
Oh, God.
Sorry, once September rolls around, clock resets, and here we go.
Well, we're starting extra early, remember?
That's right.
And, and, Mr. Chairman, I believe the selectmen want to review these at one of their October meetings.
Okay.
So...
Excuse me, I'm so sorry.
Isn't Loua Loua working on it?
No, and then there's still that matter to schedule, so...
Yes, ma'am. All right, thank you very much. Good to see you, dear.
Do we have anything on this or no?
Cut now, or you have a...
I have to.
Do you want to make it to the room?
Yeah, let's cut through this.
Tonight, tomorrow night, and Wednesday night. I make one request before I go, if you're going to do zoning.
I think this is just a preliminary overview, but go ahead, go ahead.
I, what I've been talking to a lot of people recently, and I was wondering if, when we do up the zoning articles, they could have a description of exactly what that zoning entails, and then perhaps a quick statement saying what the long-range results of that zoning would be.
I got to think that one over.
Gary, they don't, I'm just asking, because they don't, and they vote or they don't vote on, on the zoning that they're looking at right now, but what happens in the long run is something they should know about. is something they should know about, and we're the ones who do it.
I think this is not a conversation I want to have right here and now.
Okay.
Because I think there's, I think we need to sit down and really talk about the effect of zoning and the fact that it's not, it's not an etched-in-stone process, but it's mutable and ongoing and changing.
Right.
So-
Mr. Chairman, and could I just say, I do want to have a discussion because there are some things that are being said that are not accurate, and I do want to have that discussion. If, especially if people think, have questions that they're not being answered, I'd like to know what those are. I don't think it's fair for anybody to start saying these things without, I don't know what they are. So I do think we have to have a discussion about that.
Yeah.
We're starting extra early, so there can be all kinds of opportunities to discuss this, but since 2011, we have put a report into the warrant answering all these questions. I, I'm really not, I'm getting annoyed at some of the representations that are made. I just want the board to understand that.
Right, well, that's what I thought, you know.
And I think all of you, as individual members, have a responsibility here to this board to make sure that whatever your questions are, they're answered before we go out into some sort of public venue. So-
Or gather up questions and write them down and give them to you.
Well, that's right. Leslie and I are here, we're always available, and I think you, as board members, have a responsibility to each other and to the staff to make sure we know what you're talking about. I sense a very poisonous-type atmosphere building in advance of town meeting, and I hope none of you are part of it.
I'm not.
So.
Yeah.
The people running around saying, we asked these questions and they're never answered. Who did you ask the questions to?
All right, let's, all right, but you know what? I think Andrew has said-
He knows.
What's going on at this point. I don't, I don't want to belabor this issue at the moment, but since this is being televised and people do see this, I'm going to say I'm a little chagrined by it, because this board, and I know staff, has been very open toward answering questions, and to hear that things are being unanswered, you know what? Bloody well, come forward and say your piece. But this back, this backbiting type stuff, I'm not buying into it.
It's very discouraging.
It is very discouraging.
The comments that are being made are not accurate at all.
No.
I try to correct them, but then they run them up again.
Yeah, but come forward, talk to staff, and if you're, if it's not being addressed, this is why you have a board to deal with it. All right, so I'm sorry to have gotten off on that tangent.
We have a list to go over with you. We can schedule special meetings if you would prefer.
What am I doing, meeting, if you're just tasked with, you know, talking about your zoning stuff?
How about, how about-
I'm doing it at ten o'clock at night, really.
How about if you actually just give them a few moments to let them roll out the information at this point, instead, unless you've seen it before, I have, I haven't. How about we give them a few minutes, please?
Go ahead, they brought it, let's do it.
Yes.
We'll go over it real quick.
I know you will.
I don't have anything in front of me, though, right?
No. Okay, so we have a small, very modest list of some zoning changes to the bylaw and some changes to the zoning map. One of them is the secondary lot program, allowing a tertiary dwelling on the unrestricted lot.
Which would mean the primary.
The primary.
Which we thought was already in.
Yeah, and we're going to change the terminology a little bit, because also with that, the way the bylaw's currently written, the primary lot has to be the larger of the two, and some people have come forward and they've wanted to keep the smaller lot as the unrestricted lot and give the larger lot to the covenant program, so I don't know if there's really a basis for that. Should it be the property owner's decision? So, so we're proposing a change to that. Tertiary dwelling, we're proposing to increase the size to six fifty?
Either six fifty or six hundred. We, you know, you've already had a couple instances where you've had to give special permits for the larger size.
We just, we're already there.
So, you know, an extra hundred square feet is not a big deal.
There's still the issue of special permits in some of these guys.
We've looked at some of the other bylaws, I mean, they allow up to eight hundred and fifty. I still think we should keep it small, but-
Were you distributing something to them?
No.
No.
No, not yet.
Thank you.
We got nothing. A change to the height requirements in the CMI district.
Wait a minute, before we go on tertiary dwelling, the other potential changes that we're talking about is, right now, it requires owner occupancy on the lot, so one idea that's been brought up is, as long as the tertiary dwelling, if someone would commit to owner occupancy for that, that there should be maybe an allowance for that. And also, for an owner occupied, there are some organizations that would like to build a tertiary dwelling, but obviously, they're not owner occupied, so we might want to at least have an allowance for a nonprofit, a housing corporation, something like that. So.
Okay, a change to the maximum height requirement in the CMI district.
Should be, a new definition of height, which Dan Malloy is drafting.
That's, that's in the technical amendments article, and the ZBA has also asked for some changes to the height. I don't know what they are yet.
I am going to pass you thus, please.
So it would change the maximum height in the CMI district from thirty feet to forty feet.
What's CMI?
It's the area, we haven't, we have not mapped this yet. This is a district that exists in the bylaw. It was intended for the Mid-Island area. It's in our implementation schedule to have this mapped, I think this year, not next year. So, and again, this is preliminary, but we want you to at least think about this. The yellow area is the area that we're focusing on. That's the current, the RC district currently is all of the yellow area and the red area, or the pink areas, okay? So we definitely want to focus on the yellow areas as part of the rezoning. The pink areas, we're still thinking about whether we want to include them or not, so they could stay RC for now, but we may, they may be better in other districts, and so we may want to start with just the yellow district right now. The areas in green are borderline districts that are in residential or some other. And whether or not we include those, that may be something we decide to put off, but again, we wanted to let you know, we're thinking about this general Mid-Island area. Right now, we've got the zoning map for this change to, I've at least focused on the yellow area, so that's where we are right now. We have time to refine that.
Just be aware that I am not in favor of only forty feet at all, any, everywhere that downtown.
Okay, well-
Because I'll tell you, what I want, the board, is that mess that's attached to the Cave Cod Hospital. Everybody saw how bad that was. That's the highest building on the Cape, and it looks like Cali.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that, that building is not, that building is much higher than forty feet.
Absolutely.
And if the board wants to revise that number downward, that's fine, but I think at this point, we would like to start there.
Especially whether the HTC is ever going to allow it.
We also have this foolish theme, isn't it?
If that's the point, Mr. Chairman, then, then what's the harm? If the HTC isn't going to allow it, then I suppose it could be a hundred feet.
Because we're going to get attacked by it, and we don't need that kind of pressure.
The point in this area, as part of the Mid-Island plan and our other discussions, is to get a functioning third floor and not to have pancaked seven-and-a-half-foot levels in at least that area.
Well, they're eight-and-a-half to nine foot.
And it could be less than forty feet, it might be, there might be a different number that everyone feels comfortable with, but I feel important, it's important to consider, we've talked about having, getting rid of this one-size-fits-all-type regulations in our bylaw, and thirty feet in a very, changing it in this very limited area where there are massive, much higher buildings around. The Boys and Girls Club is higher than thirty feet, the hospital in the general area will be higher, and if this is an area where we can possibly add some additional housing under certain circumstances, I think the board should look at it. I think you should approach it with an open mind and not prejudge it at this very early stage. Thank you.
I've just seen a lot of, I don't know how tall is the comments?
Can we move on beyond this at this point? Because this isn't really open for discussion. I think Mr. Vors has asked us to have an open mind. Just, I think you've made us gravely aware of it at this point. Okay, so duly noted.
Okay, next article, a cleanup of the MCD section of the bylaw. I worked on this today, I actually didn't have quite as many proposed changes as I expected, but there's a lot of redundant language and unnecessary language that can just be deleted.
Leslie, clarify before you continue, is this in addition to the ones you told us about last month or the month before that, or is this the list now?
This is the list.
Because there are things that we've been talking about putting on the list for the past year, and you're probably thinking, and I don't, I don't know what's happening with some of the stuff we've been talking about the month.
I have a folder with some notes in it. It's very haphazard, so if something's not here, then let me know if it's fallen off for some reason. Okay, so technical amendments, ZBA is interested in making some changes to the height definitions, which are building and structure height, average, mean grade, and mean grade. I don't know what those changes are, but it's been coming up quite a bit on applications.
It's horrible, 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 horrible.
Did you get the article, tell me, out of proposed?
That was for flood zones.
Now, Dan Malloy, as I told you, Dan Malloy was working on a draft forming that would work for the surveyors and make it simple and everybody be on the same page, because each time we mutate this thing, three or four times since nineteen seventy-two, it has gotten no better, but better in one way and horrible in another way, and it's still being misinterpreted, and everybody's on a different page, so.
So these are mostly, at this point anyway, definitional changes. We're going to clarify where you measure from relative to yard setbacks, measuring from the corner boards.
We did that.
I don't-
They said finish wall of the foundation.
I don't think that made it into the bylaw, so.
We did that three years ago.
All right, can, can, instead of trying to micromanage this, this is just preliminary.
And then some other things, I'm sure will come up on the technical amendments. We have some rezonings that Andrew's been working on, Old South Road rezoning down at Old South Road and Nobedear.
Right. This is Keane's property, and we had originally thought that would probably work for the commercial neighborhood, but we think now that should be probably commercial Mid-Island to CMI.
Which allows what?
It would, we want to introduce an apartment allowance in CMI as well, with a higher, higher density than, you know, it's not as high a density as downtown, but it's, so it's in between commercial neighborhood and-
New buyer is waiting for, he's not going to do anything now, he's going to wait for the zoning change, because he wants a good multiple apartments on three vacant lots, so he's waiting for the zoning change now.
So, and CMI could help with that. It allows for some zero lot setbacks, so even if the, you, there was-
There's going to be attached these three, if you get them.
There was, I know, at least in the earlier HTC review, they had asked, well, could the buildings be put together under the current zoning? They can't, but CMI, they could. So that's a little bit of a change from what we had originally envisioned, but I think it will work. Which one? That's going to be citizen, I'm aware that there are some, based on some of the citizen, there's been citizen interest in some of the articles that came before town meeting last year, that they are, we've asked them to follow on their own, not necessarily through the planning board, that, and that includes the South Shore Road, Evergreen, some of the other areas where I believe-
Over, whatever that is over there, White Street.
They are, they are looking at that.
I've talked with someone on Old South Road who's interested in a change from RC two to CN. It was a property that the planning board originally included in the zoning to CN, and it was removed at the owner's request, now they've changed their mind.
This must be at the beginning of South Old South Road.
It's near Amelia.
In the middle there.
So I urge them to do that through a citizen petition. Yeah, I talked with someone on Skyline, and they're interested in trying to extend the Woodland Drive R-20 zone down to the corner of R-20 and Skyline.
Skyline's still Lug Two.
It's still Lug Two.
That's not a good transition at all.
So.
That's probably going to get one in there.
You're going to get one?
You've got to get one in there.
Except thirty years.
I'm not, I'm not in favor necessarily of jumping from R-20 to LUG two. We don't do that.
But what is, but what is the Woodlands that they're talking about now?
There's a-
Like the beginning pass?
The beginning part.
Like Paul Smith and the guy on the left there?
It's Paul Smith, he's the one that's interested in doing it. But what's separating Paul Smith from the rest of the R-20 is a fairly significant piece of land that's still owned by Walter Blawacki.
And is it Lug Two?
It's Lug Two.
Wow, that's tough. We're going to get LUG one at least up until then.
I mean, if we get-
I encourage him to come in and talk with you. But I also reminded him that the rezonings proposed by the planning board didn't go well last year, and that was LUG two to LUG one, so LUG two to-
I, I think-
And there's no sewer, there's, you know, well.
Yeah, I mean, unfortunately, part of the experience has been as, as the board, I mean, we've, we've always tried to make things open and available for guidance to the public, but one thing I have noticed over the course of the past two or three years is this attrition again with people from the actual neighborhood or proposing the article, showing up or even getting up at town meeting and say, I'm the one who proposed it, and I really like the idea. It seems like the board is carrying more water for individuals, and really, I think when it comes time for town meeting with rezoning, to hear from the neighbor or neighbors who want to do it, has always been invaluable. And I was quite a little surprised to see that not happening over the course of the past year or two.
They just didn't know how to do it, and there were too many combined in one, because they weren't really involved with the Boulevard.
Yeah, well, all right, I don't want to, I don't want to bela-
Just splitting them all up now.
Yeah, I don't want to belabor the point, because it's-
No.
Was there anything else?
There is, I, just to let you know that-
On the zoning perspective.
I've talked to Mr. Powers, so the rezoning that went through last year on Hummock Pond Road.
Yeah.
There's a few slight modifications that we have to make, so that's an article that you should expect as well.
Okay.
So.
Anything in Quinnet?
Oh, Quinnet.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just a question, I didn't know, I was, you know, just wondering what we've been doing, if anything, to help that situation.
Well, he's been in contact with it.
The thought, yeah, the thought, and we talked about it briefly, is looking at, again, what we're calling like the Village Old Historic, instead of, you know, having too many customized districts per area. But somehow, working together, maybe the Sconset Old Historic and this into a unified type of district.
So what we wanted to do, what we suggested at the HTC level, is to have a Matticat Old Historic, a Quinnet, more Winnetton Old Historic, for even our review, which would outlaw pools, which is where the real, that's where the rubber money rode this time.
And that's, I think, for HTC guidelines, I think that's great. I don't like that for zoning to have too many, I mean, we're trying to cut down on the number of districts now, or consolidate, but in an, in an old historic designation, the pools would be outlawed per zoning. So we have not gotten a lot of feedback from the Quinnet group. They, they did have a meeting, and I don't know that they were completely unified on this, but I'm going to follow up, and we will have something.
He's got some good ideas in his latest name, maybe craft something.
And Mr.-
Has Mr. Thornwell been working with this group pretty much steadily, or?
No, he only took it back like three years.
Yeah, I received an email from him, but over the summer, there was a meeting of the Quinnet Squam group, and they had a discussion. I don't know if they actually came to a final conclusion, though.
We gave them the information, because I couldn't go unless they couldn't go for the last minute, we gave them the information about how the other area plans-
Yep.
Were done, you know, the Matticat survey, all that stuff, and several of them seem to be very interested in going that way, because when they set standards and whatnot, then we know zoning comes out of that, like it has a surface side.
But does it have the teeth to ban pools like an historic district?
No, we can say that's not planned, we need to establish X, Y, and Z, or change the zoning to X, Y, and Z, so in those X, Ys and Zs, there are no holes in Old Matticat, because it's Matticat Old Historic or however, whatever you want to call it.
Well, again, if it was, if this Village Old Historic, that would be a use that's essentially not allowed.
And then we apply it to those areas.
The other thing, just to let the board know, is that I think you remember last year, we heard zoning articles, you know, oh, we didn't have time to review them, and sewer articles, we didn't have time to review them. So those sewer articles are now prepared early, so hopefully, when you all make our meeting times, that can be a topic that we can review.
Sure.
And I hope it's a reciprocal agreement, that we don't get last-minute zoning articles like we got the year before as well.
Can you tell me why, just briefly, why Somerset is included in adding a sewer and not the Badlands or some of those areas that's five times more densely populated? What is with Somerset that they're including in getting a sewer?
There's, there's certain-
No, Somerset, so.
There is, well, again, from the newspaper article, I did have a discussion with Earth Tech today, and part of it, I mean, with our, not Earth Tech, the new consultant, Woodward and Curran, and part of this goes towards the application to get the zero percent funding. It's very important for the areas to be grouped, to achieve the savings in the- very important for the areas to be grouped to achieve the savings in the, in the interest, I mean, it's major savings. I don't, I don't know, I mean, I don't know if that, where that stands on the implementation schedule at this point. What I'm doing is putting together maps for all of the areas, so, so they are all done and completed, and then they either get submitted or citizen articles come forward or whatever.
Yep.
Because it just makes no sense. We have it halfway down the road.
Yep.
And we carry all the force vehicles, and we're right next to the sewer beds, and we have, everybody keeps ignoring, they do Lonoy, they keep ignoring the bad.
We're, we're getting a little off tangent here.
I saw that video.
Okay, so, there was one last thing.
Were you looking at the second dwelling stuff or no?
I, I want you to, because I...
I, I'm totally with you on this, I guess, got a couple of classifications.
Yeah, because the, the thing that I've started noticing happening is all of a sudden new conditions are being added in with the second dwellings at times from, from the board.
Just one third of the area, don't be, don't go running them up for that, I just wanted the public to understand, most people don't read the bylaw, that, and I get it every week at the ZBA, is that 10 feet of apron measured from the edge of the pavement or is it measured from my property line, and I get it every week, all the time, and I just wanted people that, when they get, these are mom and pop people getting secondary dwellings, and they keep asking the question, so I just want to make sure that they understand, because it's in the bylaw, that we just add that one sentence, that it's from the edge of the pavement, not the edge of the property line, because everybody keeps asking, and now I've got a concrete apron in Scotsont, and I'm like, oh, well, that didn't work out well, did it?
Okay, so, I hear what you're saying on that one, but when we start, yeah, but there's four things on there, not just one, Linda, so...
I don't understand.
Well, they kind of go together a little bit.
They all go together, don't they?
Not really.
Well, they kind of have to be, very seriously, they do.
Who does?
I, I think the number four was kind of like my...
All right, can we, can we like start at the top and work our way down, Leslie?
Actually, we were going to suggest that you may want to wait, because Joe Marklinger was very interested in some of these items, and he was unable to be here tonight.
Right.
My, my thing is, in a general point on the second dwellings and driveway things, is when someone is putting in the apron, we have a general requirement for the apron on our list, I don't care about the width of, that's not, that's not it, if the road that they're attaching it to is a substandard road situation, they should be required to add asphalt to the width that the road would be if it was rebuilt, you know, a little piece, because they bring in the Belgian block out into the right of ways.
Here's New York.
It's, it's kind of crazy, it's sort of like...
With the one in Scotsont.
The little goofy, the little goofy curvy things that get done occasionally, like the one at Port Richard's, not at Port Richard's Way, but on the other side, Chase Lane thing there, the curving is out where the snowplow is popping the cur, flower, because they just didn't know any better.
All right, it's going to get very...
The Belgian block is the north, is standard now, everybody's doing it, but it comes out into the road too far, they need to sort of make a little one-foot, and I, that's one of the reasons why I get nervous when we approve these second dwellings, like, you know, bunches, like an A and R, because there's some stuff, it's almost like you've got to go do a site view of what something's going to look like, no different, Andrew, than when we were requiring aprons sometimes on dirt roads, we didn't realize it in some cases. But I think that, I picked up on this with a couple of them, with the Belgian block, sort of, it's, it's not off the road enough, okay, like, they have to look at each one by, on its own, the road that it's attaching to, I mean, they're going into the, into bike paths with these things now, you know what I mean, like, on a Matican road, there's a bunch of them, that again, they get done, and it's sort of out in the road a little, that's all I'm saying.
Yep.
I'm not being nitpicky, I'm trying to look at the...
Right, the, the DPW, I think, actually, we had talked about this, is that they're concerned that...
Secondary, doesn't matter.
Well, they're concerned that if they have to put, you know, a new water line or new sewer line, suddenly then they have to rebuild an expensive Belgian block apron that's out in the public way, so...
Yeah, you shouldn't...
There's some discussion, I don't know that the board has to worry about that as much as the DPW has to worry about that in setting some standards within their public right-of-ways.
I bet they were talking about when you have a separated bike path, that the Belgian block should be on the people's side.
Yeah.
Should be pavement on the other path.
Because we got one in Scotsont, which just, which just came up, Andrew, where they, they did extend it to the one that's going out, Old St. Row, you know, going that direction, that account, on the left, I keep getting pictures of it being emailed to me, they did their little Belgian block up to the bike path, and then from the bike path to the street, they did concrete, it's horrible, it should be paved to match the macadam of the traveled way to the bike path, and then from the bike path in, they should have the 10 feet, where we run into trouble is when there is a bike path involved, not so much when it meets the, the traveled way, but what happens if you get a bike path separating the road from the bike path to you, because when they, when they put the bike path in, there was, these are new houses, obviously, there was no driveway, and there's a separate, there's a grass berm between the edge of the park that runs the bike path and the road, they're wondering, what do I do between there and there, as opposed to between the bike path and into their driveway?
Right.
So, the 10 feet should run from the driveway into their property, so the dirt isn't getting on the bike path, but then what happens between the bike path and the road, it shouldn't be Belgian block, it shouldn't be cobbled, it should be macadam.
Yep.
And I think we need to look at where the secondary dwellings and stuff are coming when we get to that point, or where the new houses are, because then it'd become a chaos in that little district, I think that's what he's talking about, but I would see it with regular houses, just with the bike path.
If it comes on the road, like, the width of the road, what kind of thing?
Well, it's certainly getting very interesting.
The lot line clearing thing is yours.
So, can you guys do me a favor, will you have a little, if they already have it, can you have a little discussion with Andrew and Leslie on some of these, these issues that are starting to surface up? Because I, I think when we're, when we're trying to establish a policy like we do with our second dwellings or curb cuts or anything else, there should be some uniformity to it and not micromanaging on a certain level, okay, unless there's something going on, I'm just saying, could you just have the discussions with them, and let's see, let's see if we can fine tune what we got going on at the moment.
I just think it's...
That's the only language I want to clear, I mean, every, every property's got something that's going on.
Andrew, go ahead.
I just, I, you know, I, I would hope you all are doing site visits, I mean, we do our staff report as a, you know, as a way, you know, you're not bound to approve those or rubber stamp those.
I agree.
I would hope you are doing your site visits or looking at it on the computer or, you know, you know, I, I would never suggest that you should just rubber stamp our staff reports, you should look at them and if you want to change them, but I don't, I hope, I don't want to go back to a system where we're going over each and every one of them.
No.
That, that is not a good use of our time.
No.
Absolutely not, but sometimes, anyone's that are crossing bike paths, I think we need to take a note of those, and just add the language about 10 feet from the pavement and move on, because the pavement really, in a bike path situation, is the bike path, so they got to go 10 feet into the property.
That's true.
It's just how do you connect it, the driveway to the road now?
Sorry, I don't...
That's becoming a... I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there anything else for us?
They're tapping up or...
No, I guess not.
Andrew, did you have something else?
Getting this manual evol...
I guess not.
Or a couple pieces.
Or to read her, sorry, that's a stop, Barry.
Andrew, did you have something else for us?
No, I do need to get this thing scheduled with the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
With you and Linda.
Yep.
And then with Nat and...
Andrew.
Andrew Bennett.
Okay.
So, I guess I need you to send me some times or...
All right.
Whenever you can do that within the next 30 days.
Can do.
All right, have I made the motion for your?
Yes. We're all in favor. I have one.